Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Cunningham will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that councillor Atwood and councillor Cunningham be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. councillor Cassidy.
Chair, thanks. I wish to advise councillor Collier will be absent and move that she be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that councillor Collier be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,766th meeting, held on Tuesday the 3rd of June 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,766th meeting of council held on the 3rd of June 2025 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this administration has always put customer service front and centre in everything that we do. That means staying agile and adapting with the times. Can you please update the chamber on the latest changes coming to make sure the Shriner Council remains a national leader in responsive customer service?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you councillor Wolf, and I know that you're interested in responsive customer service, both in your current and former roles as well, and I know everyone on this side of the chamber absolutely is. Brisbane City Council has long been recognised as a leader in customer service in local government across Australia, and we know that in recent times, technology and the way people interact with organisations has moved really quickly. And so, the type of interactions that would have with councillors or with council in the past, they've evolved and changed. And, you know, when I became a councillor, council wouldn't even give me an email. I had to actually get my own email, and we used to get letters and faxes into the office. And obviously, a lot has changed in recent years, but that continues to change, and the pace of change has accelerated. And so, in order to make sure that council moves with the time and ensure that we have excellent customer service, we need to stay on top of this and make adjustments. And so, today I'm announcing that we are refreshing Civic Cabinet to create a new portfolio. A new portfolio entirely dedicated to excellence in customer service. Councillor Hutton will lead the new Customer Services Committee. Congratulations councillor Hutton. And councillor Hutton will be responsible for making sure that council is using technology to deliver faster, better, and more accessible digital services for Brisbane residents. And councillor Hutton will also assume responsibility for our award-winning 24/7 contact centre and the more traditional face-to-face or traditional phone call methods of communication that people have. And whether that's through the contact centre, whether it's through our libraries, whether it's through compliance, and also whether it's engaging with our cemeteries, councillor Hutton will become responsible for those things. And by bringing all of these services into one place, we can ensure that we continue to lead in providing the best quality services to Brisbane residents and ratepayers across all of our platforms. Now, we know that residents highly value speaking to another human being through the contact centre, and they also value the fact that that person is in Brisbane. That person is not in another country, this person is in Brisbane, and that is something that we have absolutely been determined to make sure we retain, and we will retain that going forward. There will always be a contact centre in Brisbane, but we also need to add other channels of communication and improve those channels of communication. And as part of upgrading our 24/7 digital access, we know that there are some things that we can improve, and I've asked councillor Hutton to work on some of these things. As the Civic Cabinet Chair for Customer Services, councillor Hutton will be responsible for delivering through a number of new initiatives over the next 12 months, including: online accounts with a single sign-on, authentication through MyGov, through Apple or Google; personalised digital dashboards to help residents interact with council, from anything from dog registration to rates bills, to bookings such as booking of parks, to payments and event tickets; a new services portal so that residents can log requests, track updates, change their address across all council systems, all in one place; improved access through the Brisbane App where Brisbane residents can manage their council account and get service notifications and real-time updates, excuse me; self-service and traditional channels to ensure flexibility for those who prefer online tools and those who want to speak directly to staff; web chatbots and AI to support people getting access to information easier, and that helps them resolve issues quickly as well, and us to resolve issues; extended reality tours of Brisbane's iconic landmarks, including virtual reality, and making use of emerging technologies. So I'm looking forward to these coming changes, and I know councillor Hutton is as well. There will be another series of changes made to Cabinet as well. First of all, waste will be transferred to the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, and councillor Davis will become responsible for waste as part of that, in addition to her existing responsibilities. The remainder of the City Standards Portfolio or Committee will merge with the Infrastructure Division, and councillor Murphy will lead the Infrastructure Division. Councillor Wines will replace councillor Murphy as the Chair for Public Transport, and also including management of buses, ferries, and metro.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the bushland preservation levy is collected through a 3.5% rate levy that was generated to protect Brisbane's natural environment by acquiring bushland. Noting the December report, 20 million has been generated through this levy this year, yet the LMP council has not spent any money purchasing land this year. It's in fact the first time in 35 years in this council's history that we have not bought bushland. Will you stand up today and tell Brisbane ratepayers how you're using their money and why you have not bought bushland?
Lord Mayor.
Yes, I absolutely will. And obviously councillor Griffiths has been given information in a report which is public and which anyone can have a look at. Councillor Griffiths, as we often see in this place, is cherry-picking information to suit a political narrative. Once again, that is something that happens time and time again. Now, the bushland preservation levy exists to purchase and also to invest in and maintain bushland across the city. And so, we know that in the past, that previous Labor councils used to spend the bushland preservation levy on administration costs such as photocopying. The irony of printing off thousands of sheets of paper using the bushland preservation levy, cutting down trees to do so, was not lost on us. But there's a couple of things that are critical that everyone is aware of. First of all, a number of years ago, we embarked on an accelerated bushland acquisition programme, and that saw 10 years' worth of acquisitions purchased in just four years. And so, we effectively brought forward future expenditure into a four-year period, and we bought a whole lot of land during that period. And the reason we did that is because we knew property values were increasing, we knew that the cost of buying land gets higher and higher every year, and the more we can do in a concerted period of time, the better.
Point of order.
One moment, Lord Mayor.
Just bringing the Lord Mayor back to the question.
Councillor Griffiths, the Lord Mayor is exactly answering bushland acquisition.
Why have we not bought any bushland this year?
Councillor Griffiths.
We have 100 properties on the list.
Councillor Griffiths, you asked your question, the Lord Mayor is exactly...
100 properties on the list.
Councillor, I caution you on unsuitable meeting conduct. Do not talk over the top of me, the Lord Mayor is exactly answering your question. Lord Mayor.
And so, while we embarked on this massive four-year investment, we didn't increase the bushland levy in that one year to cover the big investment. And so, the plan that we were very clear about is that that money would be recovered from the bushland levy over a number of years, which is exactly what has been happening. But the other thing is, we don't just buy the bushland, we invest in it. And so, that involves weed management, that involves replanting and rehabilitation, and a number of these sites that have been in private ownership need significant work done to them to make them part of our natural habitat network. And so, the bushland preservation levy goes to investing in bushland reserves right across the city, and that is appropriate, that's what the money is for. We acquire the asset, and then we invest in the asset, we improve the asset, we improve its ecological values, we improve its habitat values, and so that's part of it as well. But we are negotiating at this point in time with a number of different property owners, and with this programme, it's important to know that this is not something that we generally do compulsory acquisitions for. And so, we don't generally slap someone with a resumption notice and say, by the way, you might be living in your house, we're taking it. That doesn't happen. The only situations where that sort of thing has happened in the past is if there's an absent owner, or if no one's living in a particular property, then we might go down the resumption path, but generally, we acquire through negotiation. And that process can take time, and so this year we're in negotiations with a number of different property owners. We have a list of priority properties that we intend on negotiating to purchase, and we'll continue that. We have set money aside to acquire those properties, but it requires on a successful finalisation of those negotiations. So we will continue to acquire properties, we will continue to invest in properties, we will continue to make sure that we have a healthy natural environment and great bushland cover. But if you think back to the decision we made to accelerate this programme, that acceleration was done before the recent property boom that we have had. And so, by doing that, little did we know at the time that property values would increase 30, 40, 50%, sometimes more, right across the city. And so, if we hadn't have done that, can you imagine how much more it would cost to buy the same land today? And so, that's called prudent and responsible management of the bushland levy, that's called delivering more bang for the buck that people pay, that's called delivering better outcomes for the environment, and that's what we will continue to do. So I look forward to continue to acquiring properties, to continue investing in bushland properties and maintaining and improving them. That's what the bushland preservation levy is for, and that's what we will use it for.
Further questions? councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, over the last few weeks, we've heard how the Shriner Council is keeping Brisbane moving with the biggest boost to bus services in decades. Can you please update the chamber?
One moment, please councillor Parry, we'll wait till councillors are quiet in the chamber so I can hear the question and councillor Murphy can hear the question. councillor Strong? councillor Parry?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll start again. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, over the last few weeks, we've heard how the Shriner Council is keeping Brisbane moving with the biggest boost to bus services in decades. Can you please update the chamber on how the community shaped Brisbane's new bus network and how we're helping residents through this change?
councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank councillor Parry for the question, because our city is growing and we need a public transport network that can grow with us. This is something that we have known for years on this side of the chamber, it's why we've invested in the Brisbane Metro, it's why we've embarked on a new era of public transport in our city. Brisbane's new bus network is a critical part of this. The new network will connect residents across the city with the people and places they love. And community consultation is absolutely at the heart of Brisbane's new bus network. Between July and December 2022, we held one of the most extensive public consultations ever undertaken for public transport in Brisbane. This was done through two phases. The first phase included a citywide survey between July and October. This first step allowed us to get early feedback on people's current travel preferences and experiences. Now, the second phase involved extensive citywide community consultation from October to December. This allowed people to give direct feedback on the network changes to inform future planning of the bus routes. Our activities were designed to be fully inclusive and accessible. We used translated materials and interpreters, we ensured venues were accessible, and we had accessible web standards for digital tools. This community consultation was first class. Council has been validated in its approach by receiving multiple awards for the consultation that was done, and I'm personally very proud of the work that our team did. Madam Chair, the community consultation resulted in over 5,000 responses through two major online surveys, 346 people attending 23 face-to-face information sessions, 1,600 conversations at bus stops and busway stations, more than 21,000 unique visits to our interactive network portal, over 17,000 route-specific searches made on the network map, and feedback that we took on 189 different routes. And residents from over 160 suburbs across Brisbane took part. We didn't just collect that community feedback, Madam Chair, we used it. People told us they wanted more frequent and reliable services. We are now introducing the most high-frequency public transport in Queensland's history. Let me say it again, no bus service has ever run more frequently than Brisbane Metro during the peak, every five minutes, across two metro lines, M1 and M2, that will not only operate at these five-minute frequencies during peak periods, they'll also operate for 68 hours straight over the weekend. We are introducing new all-day services in areas that used to only have peak-time buses. We've redesigned routes to better connect with metro and busway stations. We are reducing duplication and congestion by freeing up road space in the city, and we are retaining many direct suburb-to-city routes where it makes sense to do so. But we know there will still be people who will feel worse off under this new network, people who think...
One moment, please councillor Murphy. Councillor Griffiths, that's your second caution, you know that it's unsuitable meeting conduct, please stop calling out while others are on their feet. councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, people who think that transferring buses or walking to a new stop or station is the end of the world, but I can tell you this, Madam Chair, on the 30th of June, the sky will not fall in and the seas will not boil, and Brisbane will have the backbone of a network that has the capacity to grow into the future. I have no doubt that there will be issues, but we will be ready to respond and remedy those. Our expert planners alongside TransLink will be analysing the rollout closely. One size does not fit all, and the new network is no exception. But I know that this network is the result of detailed and comprehensive community consultation. It has been shaped off the back of feedback from thousands of Brisbane residents who had their say. Brisbane's new bus network will deliver a more connected city, and in the lead-up to the 30th of June, we'll be asking people to get informed, and they already are getting informed. Passengers will not be alone in this change, there will be on-the-ground support at busway stations before and after the implementation to assist our passengers on their journey. These changes will take some time to get used to, but we'll be there throughout the process to help residents to plan their new journey. So our message to Brisbane residents is now is the time to get informed, now is the time to find out about what these changes mean for your journey. 80 million passengers a year use our bus network, two-thirds of all public transport in the city, Madam Chair. We make these changes not for ourselves, we make these changes for them, so this network can grow.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Turn up and go time.
Are there further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, I refer to your, quote, "detailed and comprehensive consultation about the new bus network" and draw your attention to the fact that during both the consultation phase of the new bus network and the final bus network review, you and this council administration repeatedly stated for the 106 bus that there would be, and I quote, "there are no changes to the hours of operation, frequency, or suburban route path for this service." I'll say that again, "there are no changes to the hours of operation, frequency, or suburban route path for this service." Bus timetables were finally released yesterday, and the afternoon 106 school bus service route has been changed and will no longer interchange at Corinda Rail Station in Cluley Street, which services St Aidan's Girls' School and local Catholic Primary School. These students will no longer be able to travel unless they walk hundreds of metres out to the main road, they will no longer be able to travel further to Corinda, Oxley, 17 Mile Rocks, and to Mount Ominy so that they're able to get home. Why has your administration deliberately misled and made false statements saying that there were, and I quote, "no changes to hours of operation, frequency, or suburban route paths" when clearly they have now been announced as changed?
councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know that councillor Johnston is an absolute expert when it comes to misinformation. She has done this so many occasions throughout the process of designing Brisbane's new bus network.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I table the information from the bus network review and I table the new bus timetable.
Thank you councillor, no councillor, you don't get up and continue, you've asked your question, and she can do that during general business, she's asked a question. councillor Johnston.
This was too literal, we just tabled it.
Thank you, she's not to respond, she has asked the question. Councillor Johnston, councillor Massey, I caution you for unsuitable meeting conduct, calling out over the top of me.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
If you listen, I'll explain that you've asked the question, it is now councillor Murphy's turn to answer the question, you don't get up and continue to add and debate it. There will be time to do that, as you know, in GB if you're not happy with the answer. councillor Murphy.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor.
I claim misrepresentation.
I note your claim. You haven't actually... Hang on, just one moment councillor Johnston, just wait, just... councillor Massey, I caution you again, do not need your assistance. councillor Johnston, I note your point of misrepresentation. And I caution you for calling out too. councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I was saying, we know that councillor Johnston loves to use her residents as a pawn in the game that she plays in this chamber against us, and once again, we see with Brisbane's new bus network, that is what she is doing.
One moment, please councillor Murphy, point of order councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented, Madam Chair.
I note your claim. councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, councillor Johnston has accused council officers of lying to her and her staff, and in the chamber just then, she has accused myself and the Lord Mayor of misinforming her and her residents about changes to bus services in her ward. I'm also aware that she has intimidated our officers and acted in a completely inappropriate manner when dealing with the consultation staff who work in the Brisbane Metro team.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim.
Now...
councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, we heard from councillor Johnston about changes to the 104 and the 106 bus routes. Councillor Johnston incorrectly...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
My question was about the 106 bus.
Thank you councillor Johnston, thank you. And councillor Wines, please don't call out either.
Point of... Why doesn't he get a warning?
What councillor? Did you just say point of...
I just said point of order, why doesn't he get a warning?
What's your point of order?
Why doesn't he get a warning?
I'm chairing the...
We all get warnings.
Councillor Griffiths, I'm chairing the meeting, not you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So councillor Johnston incorrectly believes that students at Corinda High School will be disadvantaged.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I did not mention Corinda State High School.
No councillor, just if you've had a...
I mentioned St Aidan's and the local Catholic school.
Councillor Johnston.
Why is councillor Murphy not answering the question that I asked?
Councillor Johnston, well, I think he's trying to, but he's constantly being interrupted. Now, you can claim...
I did not mention Corinda State High School.
Councillor Johnston, you can claim a point of misrepresentation, and we'll clear that up later.
So it's hidden, it's wrong. That's what I was talking about.
councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Can you imagine asking a question and then not wanting to get the answer in this place? Wanting to spend your time using up the opposition, hard-done-by opposition, using up the time that they have, the limited time, only 45 minutes every week they get for questions? And councillor Johnston...
Point of order, would you just answer the question?
Constantly interrupts me.
One moment, please councillor Murphy, can you just turn your mic off and wait a moment? I didn't ask you for your point of order councillor Griffiths, so don't keep yelling out, and it's... I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Murphy is trying his best to actually answer the question. councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So councillor Johnston incorrectly believes that students at Corinda High School will be disadvantaged, and I'm happy to assure her...
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
On relevance, my question was not about Corinda State High School, it was about St Aidan's. I'm sorry, does the Lord Mayor think it's a joke that children from school cannot get on the bus any longer because of the changes?
Councillor Johnston, you had a very long question, it was almost two minutes, and there was a lot of information in there.
I'll table it as well, it did not mention Corinda State High School, it mentioned St Aidan's.
And, thank you, I think...
So please, relevance to the question.
Councillor Johnston, councillor Murphy, can you come back to, I believe it's the 106 bus that councillor Johnston is talking about? councillor...
Sure, Madam Chair, absolutely, I will let councillor Johnston know absolutely about St Aidan's, but before we do, we need to talk about the 104, because she's also falsely accused us of cutting that service.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
One moment councillor Murphy, point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, my question is about the 106 bus and the impact for school students at St Aidan's and the local Catholic school, it was not about the 104, and I would ask you to draw the Chair back to answering the question, it's a legitimate question.
councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my context for this is why I believe the question she's asking is dealing in misinformation, is because she's done exactly this with the 104.
Refer to the councillor via title, not she, thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, so the reason that I believe councillor Johnston is dealing in misinformation with this bus route is because she dealt in misinformation with a previous bus route just days ago. So on the 104, she falsely accused it of being cut in BNBN, and of course, it has not been cut. If councillors are looking for school services, I would suggest that the best thing to do is to search for school services inside the school term, because if, you know what happens if you search for the school services and it's not inside the school term? If it's in school holidays, guess what happens? They don't come up! They don't come up. They do, they don't come up. But that didn't stop councillor Johnston who penned an email through to the CEO.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, my question is about the cut to the afternoon service of the 106, which impacts on St Aidan's and the local Catholic school.
And councillor Murphy is answering your question which we've heard several times.
He's now talking about private correspondence to the CEO of council and if he wants to continue to do that...
Councillor Murphy actually has five minutes to answer the question of which he is providing some context. And... He keeps getting interrupted. Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I'd be upset if I was councillor Johnston too because the only reason that I know about this email, it's not because the CEO told me, it's not because the project team told me, it's because councillor Johnston emailed this all to the media as well. And so the media came to us, asking us if her claims of cutting the service were true. And guess what? They weren't. It was a lie. It was a lie, Madam Chair. And, and do you know what the truth is about the claim she's now making?
Councillor, can you please refrain from using that word as well? Your time has expired. Councillor Johnston, you have three points of misrepresentation.
Well, my first, my point of order, Madam Chair. I was noted in the minutes for using the word lie, even though you said you couldn't use the word liar. And you have made a very clear statement about using the word lies, lies, et cetera. So why has councillor Murphy's unsuitable meeting behaviour not been noted in the minutes?
That is not part of a misrepresentation councillor Johnston.
No, no, I made a point of order. So what's your response to my point of order, please?
I'm, well, I'm actually looking after the chamber and running it and making the decisions, so I don't need you to question that, thank you councillor Johnston. There are other avenues you can use if you want to do that.
So it's okay to say lies if you're an LMP councillor?
Yes.
Right. But it's not okay?
If you would like to go back and watch the video, you will see councillor Johnston, I've just called out councillor Murphy on that.
No, yeah.
Councillor Cassidy.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Madam Chairman, you're...
Just one moment, I just need to check councillor Murphy's time because of your interruption. A few seconds councillor Murphy. Just one moment councillor Murphy, councillor Griffiths, that's your third caution. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chairman, unlike an investment or a super fund, with councillor Johnston, past performance is an indicator of future performance. And she has misled her community on Brisbane's new bus network right from the very beginning. So why now, right as the network is about to be implemented, would we believe anything she says about BNBN? This claim, oh by the way...
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Well, we'll get to this.
Now councillor Johnston, your three misrepresentations.
Yes, first of all councillor Murphy said that I had been spreading misinformation to the community, that is untrue. The misinformation is contained in his and the Lord Mayor's budget book to residents, which stated there'd be no changes to hours of operation, frequency or bus routes. The second point of misrepresentation is that I have used residents as pawns, which is an outrageous statement. Residents in my community are not pawns, they are not, it's an offensive comment to any resident of Brisbane who has felt concerned about their buses and it really should have been withdrawn, but it is an outrageous and false statement by councillor Murphy. And thirdly councillor Murphy said that I, quote, "intimidated council officers." I may have disagreed with council officers.
Councillors, councillor Murphy, I know you're not given the same respect but I ask you to please be quiet while councillor Johnston's on her feet.
I may have strongly disagreed with council officers, but that does not mean intimidation and councillor Murphy's statements are both defamatory and false and I would ask that they be withdrawn.
Further questions? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, you just updated the chamber on Brisbane's new bus network. I personally have enjoyed your informative weekly updates and the rollout of the new network.
One moment councillor Parry. Councillor Griffiths? Yeah, and I've just pulled up another councillor for laughing and doing that. Just calm down. Councillor Griffiths?
Point of order, Madam Chair, you've warned me three times now in this meeting, you want to see me out of the chamber, you want to see all of us out of the chamber, it would be a much easier meeting if you just expelled all of us now.
Well, first of all councillor, that's not a point of order. And second of all, as you failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I do hereby warn you in accordance with section twenty one six of the meeting's local law two thousand and one, that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued. Councillor Parry.
Councillor Murphy, you just updated the chamber on Brisbane's new bus network. I personally have enjoyed your informative weekly updates on the rollout of the new network, particularly all the things that are happening on Brisbane's north side. Sadly, it doesn't sound like some councillors have been listening. Are you concerned that some councillors and MPs are willfully misleading Brisbane residents about the new bus network?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank councillor Parry for the question because last week we heard some very disappointing rhetoric, didn't we, from councillor Griffiths? Madam Chair, while most of us, before we come into the chamber and prepare for council, we read the papers, we get across the issues in our wards, councillor Griffiths slips on his clown shoes. He applies white paint to his face and he puts a bright red nose on, ready for the circus to commence.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I would hope that you would proactively take action against those offensive comments, which clearly the Lord Mayor's staff and the LMP councillors think is funny, but it's not appropriate and councillors should be dressed appropriately.
Thank you councillor, and I was about to do that and ask councillor Murphy to please come back to the question and be respectful of other councillors.
Well, Madam Chair, last week councillor Griffiths stood in this chamber and he belittled the officers that had come to his ward to give him a briefing on the new bus network. He... Look, I claim to be misrepresented, but I also find that defamatory what's been said about the officers.
Thank you councillor, you can wait, thank you. You'll get your opportunity to speak. Councillor Murphy.
Well, Madam Chair, I suspected at that point councillor Griffiths might say something like that, so I brought a copy of his speech from last week and I'll table it so he can read it while I get through this question, so he can see if it was in fact defamatory or if it was in fact a true representation of the words that he used to describe the briefing that he received. Because he carelessly implied that those officers were involved in some sort of conspiracy to hide information from him. It was embarrassing and it was laughable, which is why I say councillor Griffiths comes in here and acts like a clown. Because Madam Chairman, I know that deep down councillor Griffiths...
Point of order councillor Griffiths?
I think that's inappropriate to be called a clown, I would ask the councillor to withdraw that and I would ask...
He didn't call you that, he said act like, thank you councillor Griffiths. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, councillor Griffiths called one of the councillors on this side a grub last week, so a clown is actually a very generous description of, of his behaviour in this place. And I know that it comes from a place of feeling frustrated about his lack of knowledge on the new network and it's why he should have accepted the briefing that he was offered in November last year. That, that would be, that would have answered the questions that he had in the chamber last week where he asked the Lord Mayor about how many decommissioned bus stops there are in his ward. Now, I'll give him the answer. This week, Madam Chair, there are five bus stops being decommissioned in Maruka Ward. There are also three new stops being introduced in Maruka Ward. Now councillor Griffiths spoke about misinformation in my answer to the last question. Councillor Griffiths has said that there were between sixty to eighty stops being decommissioned around Brisbane. Naturally, this is misinformation. The number of suburban stops being decommissioned is twenty two. And if you include CBD stops, that number becomes forty one. Councillor Griffiths was wrong with these figures and when he was in his diatribe later in the council meeting railing against the new bus network, you can again read his speech that I've just tabled because he didn't name a single route that was affected, he didn't name a specific change that he would like, not one. Madam Chair, from a councillor who's been in this place for twenty years, coming up against this new bus network, the biggest change to Brisbane's bus network in twenty five years, and councillor Griffiths hates it so much that he couldn't name one single thing that he would change about it. Even now, Madam Chairman, he's gone quiet because there isn't a single thing that he would change about it. What he is doing...
Point of order, Madam, if, Madam Chair?
Point of order councillor Griffiths.
If I speak, I get mocked and if I don't speak, I get mocked.
Councillor, do you have a point of misrepresentation? Then that's not a point of order. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. What we saw last week was a very low quality contribution from councillor Griffiths. So if councillor Griffiths has changes that he wanted to the bus network, do you think he would have proposed those back in the original consultation that we did back in twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three? No, he didn't propose any changes. But now at five minutes to midnight councillor Griffiths is railing against the changes. But he isn't the only Labour member spreading fear and misinformation, Madam Chair, there are others. Last week, the Lord Mayor reminded us that it was actually Labour Minister Bart Melish who signed off on this new bus network, which is why it was confusing to see the now former minister dispute this and accuse the Lord Mayor of verbaling him. Now I know there's been a lot of change for big money Bart in the last twelve months and becoming backbencher Bart might have impacted his memory.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
That's about the fourth time now councillor Murphy has not referred to somebody by their appropriate title. Are you going to ensure that he does?
Councillor, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Murphy.
But Madam Chairman, I have a picture of Bart Melish signing off on the new bus network. And do you see, do you see? See how happy he is? Can you see how happy he is? He's smiling. Isn't it wonderful, Madam Chairman, to have photos, to have memories and to have a copy of the signed document right here?
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Thank you councillor Murphy, your time's expired. Councillor Griffiths, you have a point of misrepresentation.
Yes, the point of misrepresentation is that there's clearly, I've got a list, a list of services, gone out to twenty thousand people of the services that the LMP have cut in this ward and I'm happy to table that for the LMP to have a look at.
Thank you councillors, question time has expired. We now move to Establishment and Coordination Committee. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Could you advise how long question time ran for today, Chair?
Yes, forty one, it's at now forty one and it's not allowed to go longer than forty five minutes.
So you just stop the councillor, so that you could just cut them off at the, at the forty five minute?
Councillor Cassidy, you have been here long enough to know that they, that is the rules.
It's your application, it's your...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
One moment please councillor Johnston, I'm just sorting out this point of order. And councillor, I do not appreciate you calling out and verbaling me, that is not suitable meeting conduct. And I caution you councillor Cassidy. Now, I have called for the Lord Mayor for us, yeah, councillor Johnston, yes, your point of order.
Madam Chair, you've just publicly acknowledged that there is still four minutes of question time remaining and you have refused to allow a question to be asked. When any speaker's time finishes, you call that's time, but instead here you are refusing to allow a question to be asked when there is still four minutes remaining in question time. Can you please advise why you are denying the option for councillors to ask questions within question time when time remains?
I absolutely can councillor Johnston, even though I've just had that point of order and you're repeating it, I will read out to you thirty three, section two, "The time allowed for questions without notice asked at a meeting shall not exceed forty five minutes." And that is my answer.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Madam Chair, I move that you are engaging in unsuitable meeting conduct by failing to follow the meeting's local law regarding other time for question time.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths and I do have to call for those in favour, say aye. Oh, yes, that's one, sorry. A motion has been moved that the Chair, that the Chair has moved, has unsuitable meeting conduct moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. I'll now vacate the Chair and leave the chamber. Councillor W...
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. It's very clear that the Chairperson of Brisbane City Council, councillor Sandy Landers, is categorically unable to follow the meeting's local law with respect to the application of the rules, particularly where it impacts on opposition, Green or myself as an independent. The rule in the meeting's local law states that, and this is thirty three two, "The time allowed for questions without notice asked at a meeting shall not exceed forty five minutes." It says, and I quote again, "The time allowed for questions without notice should not exceed forty five minutes." Now forty one minutes means there is up to four minutes left in question time, which is plenty of time both for a question to be asked and for an answer to be provided. And even if it's not the full five minutes for an answer, that is the LMP's right, that does not mean that the meeting has exceeded forty five minutes. And that denial of the questions by the opposition, which is happening week after week, this is not the first time that it's happened, the Chair of Council is deliberately cutting question time short so that her LMP colleagues are not being exposed to the questions of the opposition, the Greens and myself. This is contrary to the rules of procedure. Now where there are speakers in this chamber who reach a time limit established under the meeting's local law as speakers, it is the Chair's responsibility to say that time has expired. And the Chair does that week in and week out with respect to speaking on motions, on, on many things. In this case, the Speaker, the Chair of Council is precluding speakers from the non-LMP side of council, asking questions well within their rights under the meeting's local law for purely political purposes that benefit her LMP councillors by lessening scrutiny of the administration of the day's actions. Her behaviour in this chamber and doing this week in and week out is reprehensible. It is a breach of her... It is a breach of her requirement, of the Chair's requirements under the meeting's local law. It is a breach of her requirements under the code of conduct for councillors. And it is unreasonable to partisanly administer the rules for the benefit of your own side and to the detriment of those people who are not in your party. That is the bottom line about what's happened here today. If the time for a matter expires, which is what is intended by this, again, shall not be, shall not exceed forty-five minutes. So it has to stop at forty-five minutes. That's not what's happening. As councillor Landers has indicated today, she stopped it at forty-one minutes. And in previous weeks, councillor Landers has done this as well, at forty-one or forty-two minutes. So it's not the first time that this has happened. When the meeting reaches the three-hour mark, she simply stops speakers mid-speech. If a speaker is speaking to a motion, the Chair simply stops speakers mid-speech. If the time for budget meetings has expired, the speaker is stopped mid-speech. So in every other aspect of managing debate in this chamber, where there is a time limit set, the Chair of Council, when that time limit is reached, stops the speaker. Instead here, where it is of benefit to the LMP and for partisan political purposes, the Chair of Council is not meeting the requirement under the meeting's local law. And she is deliberately, and sorry, the Chair is deliberately reducing the amount of time in question time to benefit her colleagues at the expense of the opportunity for opposition councillors to speak. Now, this is unacceptable. It is a breach of the meeting's rules. It is a breach of the code of conduct, and it should not be allowed to happen. And I think all councillors, and today again, we have seen deliberately partisan behaviour from the Chair with respect to councillor Murphy and using the word lies as well, which, you know, and clowns and everything else. The rails run of partisan behaviour by this council chair is out of control. And this is another example of where she is using her party partisan behaviour to benefit her colleagues at the expense of the democratic rights of the opposition.
Your time has expired. Before I call for next speaker, councillor Johnston, I have to remind you that I always refer to other councillors by the appropriate name. You have used the word she and her a number of times during the speech. Further speaker, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Can I just move this motion to be put?
Seconded.
By councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Dixon, let the motion be put. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Messi. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
The motion is carried. SS no debate. I'll now put the motion of unsuitable meeting conduct. There was no debate. All those in favour of the unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please return to your seats. And also, can someone advise the Chair to come back to the chamber? Madam Chair, there's no unsuitable meeting conduct. Please return to your chair. Thank you.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Kim.
Thank you. I rise to suspend standing orders to enable me to move the following motion, that this council commits to funding the Calumbar Ward's twenty-five to twenty-six budget submission for a pedestrian refuge with curb build-outs and culvert headwall modifications at the intersection of Deveries and Ritchie Roads in Polara.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Kim and seconded by councillor Cassidy to suspend standing orders. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and sixteen against.
That has been lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, the second of June-
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
I rise to suspend standing orders to move the following motion, that this council begins the process of purchasing four hundred and nine, four hundred and eleven, four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and twenty-seven, four hundred and thirty-two, and four hundred and forty Beckett Road via the Bushland Acquisition Programme as environmentally critical land.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Kim to suspend standing orders. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim for a division. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and sixteen against.
That is lost. Clerk, councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that the motion that council increased pathways out of homelessness grant now come off the table.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that the motion from the fourteenth of May, twenty twenty-four, be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Seconded. Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
That is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
I rise to suspend standing orders to move a motion that this council contributes money to the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the delivery of the West End Ferry Terminal.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Chonghua to suspend standing orders. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Chonghua. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
That motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I seek leave to suspend standing orders to call on council to urgently fund the bikeway upgrade at the intersection of Annolly Road and Noble Street, Annolly, in the two thousand twenty-five budget.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey to suspend standing orders. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, thank you. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
Motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats quietly.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I seek a ruling on how many points of order can be made contemporaneously in an order before they become an active disorder in this place. And clearly, and clearly an embrogger on the process of the agenda. At what point can we work on the business of the day and not merely do a parade-
Thank you, councillors.
-of pointless points of order and pointless-
Thank you, councillor.
Urgency motions that they know that will fail, and if they were that urgent, they would have put them on the papers. But they, and they just clearly-
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Wines, I don't uphold that point of order, and I will decide when that, when there is, if there is a repeat point of order on a particular-
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor.
I would just like a clarification on the ruling. Previously earlier today, there's been opposition councillors that have spoken over the top. But just beforehand, through you, Chair, councillor Wines spoke over the top for about a minute, but there was no warning or anything. Is that, is that normal work?
Well, if you were watching, if you're watching councillor Massey, you would see that I turned his microphone off. Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor. That's not courage.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, second of June, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the second of June, twenty twenty-five, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
We see today the Labour-Green coalition of chaos in action. Can you imagine these people running the city of Brisbane? What an absolute debacle it would be.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillors, point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I refer you to your ruling about referring to councillors by their correct title. Coalition of Chaos and, quote, these people are not their appropriate titles.
If I, if I rule on that, councillor Johnston, it's going to rule out a lot of other things as well.
Well, you have made this point-
I don't uphold that.
Well, Madam Chair, it's not a joke because I've been warned for using the word she. And I would very much like you to clarify whether that applies to everybody.
Thank you, councillor. I don't uphold that point of order. And I ask everyone to be quiet while other councillors are on their feet. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. As I was pointing out, the Labour-Green coalition of chaos, you can imagine the chaos of running Australia's largest council with this kind of behaviour that we've seen at play today. We see the leader of the Defence Force for the Labour-Green coalition of chaos stepping-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. And councillor Massey, I caution you again. I just finished saying that you would be, I don't care what game you're playing over there. You do not call out while the Lord Mayor is on his feet speaking. And I've asked you several times, this meeting so far, to not do it. So you are cautioned. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I'm not aware that the leader of the defence is an official title in this place. The Lord Mayor is not using official titles as both your deputy and you have said over and over again. Are you going to call the Lord Mayor on his acts of unsuitable meeting conduct?
No, I haven't had a problem with that and I'm not going to repeat all of the comments that come from this side of the chamber that are not the official titles either, councillor Johnston. And I do ask you to refrain from continually disrupting the meeting with these points of order that are inappropriate.
Which, Madam Chair, I just need to be clear, which unofficial titles are okay to you? I'd like to know which ones...
Simple answer is no. And councillor, I caution you because you were not called to speak. You just jumped to your feet and spoke and I did not call you to speak and then you spoke over the top of me. Councillor, that's your third caution right there. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We saw the ludicrous situation before where councillor Johnston asked a question and then did everything possible to prevent councillor Murphy answering that question.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I just thought you might want to address the very loud cackling from the LNP councillors because they certainly weren't being silent while their Lord Mayor spoke.
I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
No, well, Madam Chairman, I claim this representation.
I note your claim. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There's a reason councillor Johnston loves to interrupt and interject so strenuously because the way councillor Johnston would quite clearly like it is that we all sit quietly and she does all the talking. And no one else gets to speak, no one gets to answer any questions, no one gets to deliver any reports. We just should listen to councillor Johnston all day, every day. That's the way she would clearly love it to be. But just earlier, it was quite extraordinary. I had to go to the bathroom, Madam Chair. And so I left the chamber, bowed to the chair as is customary, went through, opened the door, went to the bathroom, washed my hands with soap and paper, dried them, came back out and councillor Johnston was still asking the question at this point. She hadn't even finished asking the question, yet didn't allow councillor Murphy a moment to even start answering the question before councillor Johnston interjected. It was quite extraordinary. And then has the temerity to accuse you, Madam Chair, of inappropriate conduct in the chair. Anyone who's watching this meeting can see straight through this. It is ludicrous behaviour, it is disruptive behaviour, and it is behaviour from someone who clearly wants everything in their direction and their way. And so that's not the way a democracy works. There are 27 councillors in this place and everyone has an equal right to participate and to speak. But what we're seeing time and time again is councillor Johnston and her antics chewing up almost the entirety of question time and actually denying her opposition colleagues the ability to ask further questions. It is quite remarkable. If there is one threat to democracy in this place, it is councillor Johnston's antics and time wasting because she is denying, councillor Johnston is denying her own colleagues the ability to ask questions. How many questions did the opposition get this time? Two. Two. And so, I mean, it is quite remarkable.
One moment, please. Thank you, councillor Griffiths. And I'm not she. Councillor Griffiths, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with Section 218 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. And your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Lord Mayor.
And then the antics that we've just seen of points of order with the intention to move notices that are not on the motion relating to the budget. And once again, this is an illustration that if the Labour-Green coalition of chaos was ever in office, there'd be dramas because anyone who's actually been involved in preparing a budget would know that at this point in the cycle, no further financial changes can be made to the budget for the upcoming year. The budget has been set and it is now going through the final process of compilation. And so to actually come at this late notice to make a claim on the budget that is coming out next week just goes to show their lack of knowledge of budgeting, how it works. This is a budget process that takes many, many months to develop. They're coming in at the 11th hour, well, actually, one minute to midnight, as councillor Ryan Murphy said earlier. And it's just more stunts and, you know, political games, politicking. And so, you know, this is what unfortunately the opposition has been diminished to through their own behaviour and it is quite, really quite sad. Now, just finishing the question that I answered in relation to changes to civic cabinet, I was just mentioning before I ran out of time that councillor Wines will replace councillor Murphy as the Chair for Public Transport, being responsible for buses, ferries, the active transport component of the portfolio will move into infrastructure, so councillor Murphy will retain that. But councillor Wines will be responsible for the metro operations and then the planning for metro expansion as well. The deputy mayor, councillor Howard and councillor Allen will remain in charge of finance, community and the arts and city planning respectively. And each of these portfolios retain the same core responsibilities, although some of their previous jobs will now fall under the remit of the Customer Service Committee as well. And so effectively, there will be some changes that relate to components of their portfolios going into customer service. And thank you, Chair, councillor Landis and also Deputy Chair councillor Huang. You've been doing a terrific job and you remain in the positions that you're in. And I have to say, Madam Chair, you have the patience of a saint with the behaviour that you have to witness, behaviour that would never be tolerated at any other level of government. But you are very patient and fair and I thank you for that. And so those changes will be coming through via a submission for debate in the council chamber next week. And so they came through cabinet yesterday and they'll be coming for debate next Tuesday. As I always do, wanted to talk about the lighting up of council assets this week. Last night, City Hall was lit up in green and gold to celebrate another 575 new citizens who became citizens, as you know, Madam Chair, in our ceremony at City Hall here last night. Meanwhile, the Story Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Reddick Cliff Place and the Tropical Dome will be lit blue to support the big freeze. Now in its 11th year, excuse me, the event aims to raise funds and awareness for motor neurone disease. Tonight, our assets will be lit in green to support Go Green for Eco Marines campaign, which aims to promote recycling and sustainable living. Victoria Bridge, meanwhile, will be lit up in red, yellow and green to celebrate Portugal Day, which commemorates the death on the 10th of June 1580 of one of their great national poets and literary icons. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit up in teal to support Thank a First Responder Day, which is held annually on the 2nd Wednesday of June. And on behalf of Brisbane City Council, I'd like to express our gratitude for the first responders who service our community, including the police, the fire service, the Queensland ambulance service and the SES and other first responders as well. On Thursday, the assets will be lit up in red to celebrate the Philippines Independence Day and that is the independence from Spain in 1898, 127 years ago. I was honoured to celebrate with the local Filipino community recently at their Bario Fiesta at Rockleigh, which was another great event. On Friday, our assets will be lit up in purple to support Lymphedema Awareness Month and One in Tenistry and Women Live With This Disease. On Saturday, the assets will be lit in red to support the MS Brizzy to the Bay Bike Ride, raising funds for the one in four Queenslanders living with MS. And finally, our assets will be lit up in purple on Sunday to celebrate or to mark, not to celebrate, to mark World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, which aims to promote a better understanding about this horror and the abuse and neglect of elderly people. I'd just like to also mention a milestone for our Brisbane Severe Weather Alert Service. In today's Questions on Notice, it's been confirmed that 233,000 Brisbane residents are now signed up to the service and that represents more than half of all Brisbane households. So that is a great outcome and obviously will continue driving more people to sign up. But that is, for a voluntary service, that people can either opt in or out of, that is a great result to have more than half of Brisbane households represented on that service. We saw during the recent tropical cyclone, an increase of 33,910 sign-ups during that event. Last week, we celebrated Queensland Day, which is our state's 166th birthday. And as part of those celebrations, Premier David Christopher has revealed the All the Best Awards or the winners of the All the Best Awards. And this is part of a new tradition that puts a spotlight on favourite local experiences and places from meat pies to beaches and iconic events.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move an extension.
Seconded.
Has been moved for an extension by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So as part of this process, there were 61,000 votes cast by Queenslanders right across the state in terms of some of the great, I guess, Queensland experiences and businesses to celebrate. And local businesses in Brisbane took home gold in six of the categories. So the best palmy was Botany in Newstead. The best barn me was My Street Food in Wollongaba. The best burger was Jeebus in Tin Galpa. Haven't been there yet, I need to go. Best beer was Queensland Pale Ale by Archer Brewing Company in Wilston. The best pub was the Slipstream Brewing Company in Yorongpili. The best coffee was the Coffee Commune in Bowen Hills. And the best landmark, councillor Wines, was the iconic Story Bridge, which is absolutely fitting and why we're determined to make sure that we have a long-term restoration plan for the Story Bridge without a toll, without a toll, by ensuring that other levels of government step up and assist us with that as they should. Item A is the acceptance of a claim for compensation for 260 Priestdale Road, Rochdale, which is associated with the Gardner Road extension. Obviously, Rochdale's a rapidly growing suburb and one of the few greenfield development areas in Brisbane that is providing house and land opportunities and townhouse opportunities. And as part of that, we've planned various infrastructure upgrades and the Gardner Road extension is one of those that is part of our plan for the area. This is the type of business as usual work that councils, land and design teams do to ensure we have the land available needed to deliver upgrades for our residents in growing suburbs like Rochdale. While the amount agreed on with the claimant is commercially in confidence, it's important to note that our council officers work very hard to come up with the best deal possible for the residents of the city and ensure rate paid dollars are respected. And as part of this agreement, a small slither of land was resumed and that'll also, a small slither of land that was resumed will be handed back to the claimant so that they can use it, which is a good outcome for both parties. The claimant has built the retaining wall here and this will continue to be maintained by the owner moving forwards rather than council. The land resumed was part of a set of resumptions which were brought to the chamber back in February 2023. The resumptions for this land were gazetted in July 2024 and this is one of the claims being made as part of that process. The actual resumption itself was to support the widening of Priestale Road to facilitate a left turn lane as well as an additional bike lane through the corridor. Council is finalising the detailed design for the Gardner Road project, Priestale Road to Underwood Road at Rochdale. And this project will include constructing a new section of Gardner Road connecting Priestale Road in the north, adjacent to the Rochdale State High School, to Underwood Road in the south. This project will provide an important north-south connection in the wider Rochdale urban community area and it will also improve safety for road users, including pedestrians and cyclists as well. I commend the item to the chamber. Item B is the major amendment package R and this is a package designed to ensure that the city plan remains effective and relevant to a modern and growing city. It will help the market to deliver more homes sooner and improve amenity for existing uses across the city by proposing to update public safety lighting requirements to reflect Australian design standards, more closely align the Transport Access and Parking and Servicing Code with associated planning scheme policy to help enhance clarity when it comes to parking requirements and rates, and also update zones and overlays, including for properties purchased under the Bushland Acquisition Programme, and finally to support more housing supply by transitioning properties in key growth areas from industrial across to residential uses. While we're undertaking a citywide review of the low to medium density residential zone, there are sites which currently have non-residential use, such as low-impact industry, which have already been identified as being suitable for LMR or LMDR zoning. Cumulatively, 4.1 hectares of land is proposed to be rezoned to deliver more housing through this proposed amendment. In Nunther, there's 1.3 hectares of industrial land is proposed to be transitioned to mixed use, which allows for residential, commercial, retail services, community use and cultural activities. In Uppamalcravat, there's 2.6 hectares of industrial land that will become low-medium residential. In Winham, 1,500 square metres will become low-density residential. Being a major amendment, it will follow the application process outlined in the Minister's Guidelines and Rules. As the first step in the process, this item will see major R referred to the state government for a state interest review and their agreement to publicly consult on the amendment. Once again, I look forward to working with the state government to get this through and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on this threadbare ENC report before us today, both items. And it's interesting to listen to the Lord Mayor in his ENC introduction there and round out what he's proposing to do with civic cabinet. A hot tip for the Lord Mayor is that if you're going to sack underperforming chairs, you don't just shuffle them around to try and mop up each other's messes, you actually need to get rid of them out of civic cabinet. You don't reward the councillor, councillor Wines, who's overseen the Story Bridge debacle. You don't give him responsibility for the metro, which was a debacle on councillor Murphy's watch. So this is quite a strange thing that the Lord Mayor is seeking to do here to move aside and reward underperforming councillors who are clearly the problem when it comes to them aiding and abetting the Lord Mayor and his agenda here in Brisbane. And when you look at before us today, the ENC, the agenda, it's pretty light on. I mean, during question time, we had, the LNP agenda was just simply attack individual councillors. They spent their entire time in question time in that. And then the Lord Mayor made some flippant comments saying that the motions that we sought to, well, we put on the agenda today and sought to debate, things like Bushland acquisition and more footpaths and pathways out of homelessness and bikeways from councillor Johnston and ferry terminals from councillor Massey were not important issues. But the important issues for the LNP are attacking individual councillors in a shorter, and yeah, of course, in a shorter than normal question time. Really makes you think what the agenda of the LNP is for Brisbane when they think those important issues are not important. And the important thing of clinging to power is to remove a democratic process we have here, a very limited democratic process in council, and to attack councillors for asking questions. All of the hallmarks of a regime going deeper and deeper. All of the hallmarks of a regime going deeper and deeper. Clause A is a very simple item, an acceptance of claim for compensation before us today. This is related to the Gardner Road Extension project linked to the Metro Depot works. The maps provided in the report, as well as the item, are very light on detail. We can see that the council acquired two lots, well, acquired the land and divided it into two lots for road purposes and road support. It's interesting that the original compensation claim was amended after the property owner requested lot 23, which is one of the two lots, back in lieu of financial compensation. You wonder why, and as you read on, it's because the owners had already built the retaining wall the council thought it needed for the construction of the road project. So I wonder if anyone took a drive out there, I wonder if councillor Wines or councillor Murphy took a drive out there to inspect what was already there. So what we have before us today, just to sort of distill it down, is that the L N P acquired land to build a retaining wall, only to discover once they bought it that the owner of the land had already built the retaining wall. So we've gone through all of this legal process, this acquisition, and now this disposal for something that didn't need to be done in the first place. And this is the highest priority that this Lord Mayor and his L N P regime can come up with today, well, last week, I guess, and they put it through E N C. This is the most important thing, the most pressing issue that our city had before us last week and this week, was to get rid of a block of land that they bought, that they, turns out, they never needed in the first place. But this approach raises lots of questions about the planning and assessment processes, more and more concerns about the metro project, of course. And this is also related more broadly to the Gardner Road issue that's down there, which has been offered as an alternative for school traffic for Rochdale High and Rochdale State School as well. They were certainly not, they were not impressed with council's decision to close School Road when the Metro Depot was being built there and adding more time to their busy commute and making that intersection far more dangerous than it needed to be. And that work should have been pre-done and pre-planned to make sure that we're not left with these years-long headaches. So originally, residents were informed back in 2001, so we've now gone four years. The situation's getting worse, more traffic, more dangerous manoeuvres, and still no real plan for that to be sorted out any time soon. And the works on Gardner Road, if you took the L N P at their word and the local councillor at his word, or their word, I'm not sure if you're allowed to say that anymore, that it should have been done by 2024. The works were supposed to be complete by 2024, there on Gardner Road and that extension. It's now June 2025, of course, we're not seeing that done. So that is an unacceptable situation down there, and no wonder the parents at that school sew up in arms about that. The second item is this major amendment to Brisbane City Plan Package R. And what we see here, despite it being called a major amendment, are many minor changes to keep the city plan, the scheme, up to date. Despite it being called a major change, there's not a lot going on. Lord Mayor padded out quite a bit on what is actually included in this. And this is an unfortunate reality of the L N P's go-slow approach to planning in the midst of a housing crisis. Some of the changes that we're dealing with today date as far back as 2010, that's 15 years ago. That's the L N P's working with no great haste when it comes to these things. The first change updates the reference to Australian standards for lighting, a sensible move, I guess, ensuring neighbourhoods remain safe and well-lit, not world-beating stuff. If we look at closely the rezoning of 23 properties across Brisbane, some positive steps there, transitioning certain industrial zones that are clearly not going to be used for that in the future to all mixed-use zones, sorry, to residential or mixed-use rather, like the ex-Tiptop Bakery on Sangat Road in Nunndar, something that we definitely support. That's a practical response to the reality that some industrial zone land is not going to be continued in their original purpose, and in this case, has been a car yard for a long time, I think since 2001 or somewhereabouts there, that it sort of, the building was knocked down and turned into a car yard. So providing much-needed housing is a good outcome on that site. There's one in Brighton in My Wood, one of these does relate to something that happened in 2010, 83, 85 and 87 Massey Street, a shift from emerging community to low-density residential land. And this all joins the Brighton Wetlands. And at 93 Massey Street, a change from emerging community to conservation. Now, this is a property that was purchased in 2010 through the Bushland Acquisition Programme, when council was actually using that programme to purchase bushland. So it was obviously zoned as emerging communities at the time council purchased that and used it as its true purpose, which is expanding the Brighton Wetlands footprint, because it is a place of ecological significance, being a Rams R-listed wetland connected from Tinchy Tamba through there, through Deegan, through the lagoon network in Sangat, out to Moreton Bay. So it's quite incredible that it has taken this long, and this is something I've raised about these blocks being at threat, some of which, given their zoning and privately-owned a threat of more intense development, but also the zoning that retained on council blocks meant that if at any moment, any moment, the L N P wanted to sell those blocks, they could, and that was owned for emerging communities, not for bushland or not for conservation. So I've been raising this over the last few years, and I'm glad that we're finally seeing at least one here at 93 Massey Street go through. If you contrast that, though, that history from way back in 2010 where that fund was still being used to acquire bushland to today, where we've heard from councillor Griffiths there's $20 million being collected of ratepayer's money up to the end of March this year, and not one single property has been bought out of that or retained. We heard from the Lord Mayor, and not answering that question, that he thinks things like maybe weeding has gone on in bushland to the tune of $20 million. There's some changes in the Eastern Corridor Neighbourhood Plan around the Burandah Core, where there's a, something is being rezoned from open space to district centre, so proposed to be anyway, that is a significant shift, removing open spaces from the community and converting to other uses. We just would want to make sure that that is a well-located site, and there is enough open space around increasing development there to service those high-density units that will be going in. These items will be going to the minister now for approval, then out for public consultation. So again, this is a first step on some fairly minor items that are being packaged up as a major response in the housing crisis, and it's not really good enough.
Further speakers, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to item A in this, in this report, which is the Gardner Road Extension settlement of claims so that we can proceed with that project. Or I would like to take a few moments, though, at the beginning to respond to some of the things said by councillor Cassidy, who said that this side of the room took question time today to make a series of personal attacks on people. This from an individual who then spent the next 20 minutes personally attacking people, who spends his entire time in this place personally attacking people.
Councillor Wines, can you come back to the report, please? You may want to use that time in G B to address that.
I appreciate that, but I just think it's important that I defend my colleagues from a continued nasty attack.
One moment, councillor.
Chair, just some clarification if this is a part of papers.
I haven't called you yet, councillor Massey. I hadn't called you. Councillor Massey.
Chair, just trying to get some clarification if the comments through you of councillor Wines is a part of the paper we're discussing.
Pretty sure I just addressed that. Thanks very much for your help. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And as I know, many people in the Labor Party like to take attendance, and councillor Cassidy scuttled out of the room as quickly as possible as soon as I said his name.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
So I think that's important to be reflected in here as well.
Councillor Strunk.
Yes, councillor Wines is clearly not following your direction, and could you bring him back to the report, please?
Thank you, I will. Councillor Wines, can you please address?
Thank you, Madam Chair, with pleasure. Item A is submission for the acceptance of claim for compensation of land at 260 Priestdale Road. This is one of many necessary steps taken as part of our preparation for the Gardner Road Extension. It's an important step in preserving land we need to deliver this vital project for the outer south side. Despite the opposition's obsession with funding conspiracy, which doesn't exist, it's important to remember that the Infrastructure Division does get on with the job of delivering outcomes in our suburbs near and far across all points of the compass in our city. The Shunah Council invests overwhelmingly in our suburbs despite what claims are made, and the important, this important type of preparatory work is needed to facilitate rapid growth we're seeing, particularly in suburbs such as Rochdale. As the Lord Mayor has already mentioned, the amount agreed upon with the claimant will remain commercially in confidence. However, the deal that we have reached with the claimant is good news for the ratepayer. As part of this deal, a small part of the land will also be handed back to the claimant, which the land discussed does not, is not required for our purposes for the delivery of this project. This claim is part of the work which we've delivered as part of a extensive work in that community, and the Gardner Road project has been discussed at length, and it is a key access point, particularly for that community, but particularly in response to needs as a result of the Metro Depot as well. When completed, this will form part of the extension from Priestdale Road in the north to Underwood Road in the south, and will be a welcome addition to infrastructure in that district. This is in addition to our long-term plans to connect this corridor to Miles Pludding Road further in the north. There are some ongoing matters which are being finalised with other claimants which are going through the normal process. In addition, there was some greenfield land which forms part of the extension, and there is also an ongoing consultation with First Nations representatives as part of our BAU practice as part of delivery of this project. In addition to the cultural heritage approvals, there are also some environmental approvals that are also required. It's important to note that our council officers worked very hard, worked very hard to come up with the best deal possible for our residents and to ensure that ratepayer dollars have been respected. As part of this agreement, now, what I'll say is that this is part of our delivery of the project, the Gardner Road project is a vital part of that community's network. We have been discussing it for some time, and I very much look forward to the delivery of that project. I know that councillor Murphy has a keen interest in that community, and the delivery of that project, again, provides the necessary ongoing improvements, part of keeping Brisbane moving, and part of getting you home sooner and safer.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on clause B in regards to some zoning changes that have been made for an old depot in Thrust Street in Anala, right? And it was, it used to be zoned as special, special-purpose utility, and now it is for open space. This is a terrific change because the old depot, some years ago, I suppose three or four years ago, it was, it was supposed to be demolished, actually, because they had moved the depot or amalgamated it to the depot at Dara, which made sense. It wasn't being used all that much, and it just made sense to move, move the team that was actually working out, a small team that was working in that depot, over to, over to Dara. But I didn't want to see that asset lost to the city because I figured we could maybe repurpose that to another use. And I have been advocating for that through councillor Howard for a number of years now. And we've, but now that, now that they've actually changed that zoning, so it's not actually special utility purpose anymore, but it's open space, well, maybe, maybe that will actually open up the possibility of repurposing that facility to another use for the general community. This is, this, this, this sort of change of zoning or, or what's allowed in zoning, this is the third week now that a change has been made, and the other change was over, and I spoke to it about three weeks ago regarding Waterford Road, which sport and rec land over there was, you're now able to use it for general community as well, which was a terrific change as well. So I just compliment the administration, we often do that on this side, I compliment the administration for these changes because it's just going to open up those other possibilities to, especially to co-locate a lot of groups together in, say, sport and rec land or other land that is used for rec. So I'll just finalise my comments there, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the decision to proceed with major amendment package R. I did want to touch upon a point that councillor Cassidy made. He questioned, I guess, the titling of the package as a major amendment, and I would point out that state planning frameworks and legislation determine whether a package is a major, minor or tailored amendment, so we follow that guideline when titling our packages. So as the Lord Mayor indicated, it's important that the city plan is kept up to date and reflects the latest standards and circumstances relevant to planning, and this is exactly what major R is geared towards. It proposes to achieve several objectives, including amending lighting requirements in 11 neighbourhood plan codes, 14 development codes and three overlay codes in accordance with updated Australian standards. These standards cover, for example, lighting associated with roads, public spaces and pedestrian areas. Additionally, it updates zoning and overlays to reflect site changes. A central part of the amendment, Madam Chair, is based on council's industrial strategy, known as Brisbane, our productive city. The strategy helps to ensure that we can support industry while responding to the needs of the city into the future. To this end, the strategy proposed transitioning current industrial-zoned land that does not have a long-term value for industrial purposes, helping to create areas suitable for suburban and urban renewal. That's why major R seeks to transition 17 sites that are currently zoned as industrial into either mixed-use, low-density residential or low-medium-density residential. This will help ensure that the right settings are in place to support Brisbane's growth and importantly, provide greater opportunities for more housing supply. As we've said time and again, increasing the supply of housing is the solution to housing affordability challenges, and with the transition sites totaling about four hectares, that's what we're facilitating. Madam Chair, it's also worth noting that these sites are located in the areas of Nunndar, Upper Mount Gravat and Winham. One of those areas, Winham, is the subject of a suburban renewal precinct plan, so the changes here align well with a broader effort to support growth in this area. As a result of these changes, the amendment also proposes to update the overlays associated with the transition sites, including the dwelling house character overlay map and the streetscape hierarchy overlay map. For the benefit of the chamber, all major amendments, including this one, are required to follow the process laid out in the Minister's Guidelines and Rules. So those steps are, obviously, from here, we refer it to the state government for a state interest review and approval to publicly consult on the matter. Step two is the state interest review itself. Step three is public consultation on the package. Step four is consideration of submissions and changes to the amendment. Step five is the minister's consideration and approval to proceed to adopt, and then step six is the adoption itself. This item will get the ball rolling by actioning the first step and requesting the state government conduct their state interest review and grant approval to publicly consult on the package. By efficiently delivering amendments to our planning scheme, we will ensure it remains relevant and can continue to support the growth of the city. I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. Firstly, I'll move that voting is in Seriardon for item B, please. The green support growth, we know that Brisbane is changing, we want more homes, we want more opportunities for people to live close to where they work, study and connect. That's why we support smart rezonings, especially when those shift outdated industrial land to residential or mixed use. And it's the kind of planning we need for livable, sustainable cities. That's why we push for increased public transport, protective active transport links and more community facilities. Growth must be done right, and that means also protecting public green space that our community relies on. That's why I strongly oppose the deletion of 30 Tottenham Street and Woolongaba as a future parkland, as an extension of Car Street Park. This site mapped as a future extension of Pa- The site mapped as a future extension of parkland in the Beranda precinct is now in the Cooper Room Ward through you, Chair, the deputy mayor Cunningham's Ward, but it used to be in the Gabba Ward. And we advocated for it. We worked for it, we had community consultation for it because we knew that the need for this parkland was real. The local community is already experiencing increased density decreases across green space, and they deserve expanded green space, a place to breathe and gather and cool down in the summer. So let's be clear, this amendment doesn't just clean up a map. It's a stealth handover of green space, a calculated removal of a planned park buried deep in the technicalities of a planning scheme change. And this isn't an isolated case, it's a part of a broad pattern from this LMP administration. Let's take Victoria Park, once promises Brisbane's green heart and lungs. Now we know 58% of it will be taken up for a stadium, an aquatic centre, practice track, and Olympic. Yes, an independent investigation showed that, when this LMP administration said it was only 12% to 13%. And for the Gabba Ward, it continues to get worse. In the 2011 South Brisbane Riverside Neighbourhood Plan in the city plan, and we are talking about amendments to the city plan, that neighbourhood plan had six new public green spaces tagged for delivery. The Parliament Sat on Montague Road, the Visi Glass Factory, the Esbo Site, which is now West Village, 281 Montague Road, 68 Volcher Street, and Bailey Street. And guess how many of those green spaces have been delivered that was a part of this LMP council's plan? One, Banjapa Park, three sold off to developers, broken promises year after year. And now, the two remaining sites for parkland, Visi and Parlament, are under threat thanks to the LMP state governments, the teammates of this LMP administration in its ongoing dismantling of Brisbane's public green space. So when we see 30 Tottenham Street being deleted quietly in this amendment, we know exactly what's going on. This isn't planning, it's asset stripping, one parcel at a time, one park at a time. Yes, this amendment includes welcome provisions around lighting, footpath activation, and better urban design. The Greens support that, but don't talk to us about lighting improvements while you're turning the lights off at future parks. The Greens support growth, but not at the cost of trust, transparency, and community green space. We'll always back new homes, but we'll always fight for public parks, shade, trees, space to breathe. That's what makes a city livable. So I say this, we support the rezoning, smart rezoning, but we don't support deletion of green space, which is what's happening in this amendment quietly. And we don't support the normalisation of the erasure of green space and parkland from our future, city's future. If we are building a Brisbane for generations to come, let's not let this LMP sell it off before they even get a chance to enjoy it. Lines do have to be drawn.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item B in the major amendment package R in support of the package and drawing attention in particular to the rezoning of 93 Massey Street in Brighton. Madam Chair, as described in item B, 93 Massey Street was acquired through the bushland acquisition programme back in 2010, and the site now forms part of the broader Brighton wetlands and is managed as a conservation reserve. In 2015, we commenced the restoration of habitat on the site, and it continues to be managed and preserved through the bushland preservation levy. This site and the proposed change of zoning to ensure its ongoing conservation is a reminder of our commitment to preserving bushland in our city through the bushland acquisition programme. When we acquired the property, we acquired the area that was supported, that supported the significant habitat, and it was a good way of consolidating existing habitat within the Brighton wetlands. There was a house on the corner of the property, and it was determined that this section was not of the same ecological value, and so was retained by the owners and subsequently subdivided. The subdivision is also being recognised by the rezoning in this amendment. Madam Chair, since its inception in 1990, over 400 individual properties have been purchased under the bushland acquisition programme, representing more than 4,400 hectares of land preserved for future generations. And as soon as work commenced on the restoration of habitat at 93 Massey Street, we launched the accelerated programme of bushland acquisition, which the Lord Mayor referred to earlier, which ran from 2016 to 2020. At a time where cities around the world are grappling with how to preserve green space amid rapid urban growth, Brisbane continues to lead the way. Continuing the programme launched by Sally Anne Atkinson on July 1 in 2016, we're committed to an ambitious goal to secure an additional 750 hectares of precious bushland for our future generations. And not only did we reach this target, we actually exceeded it. So by December 2019, council had acquired over 800 hectares of land, 800 hectares protected from development thanks to the ambitious programme. And that wasn't any small feat. It took strategic planning, took good decision-making, and a $100 million investment over four years. But let's be clear, and the Lord Mayor also alluded to this, it was an investment, and a very smart one at that, because, Madam Chair, consider this, Brisbane property prices have surged by an average 90% over the last decade, with the most significant growth happening after this programme had actually commenced. Brisbane is now the place to be, but that means the land that we purchased for that $100 million between 2016 and 2020 would now be worth as much as $180 million today. In other words, not only did we preserve the land, but we did so at a time when it was affordable to act so boldly, and this accelerated programme has represented great value for the ratepayers of Brisbane, as well as maximising the amount of land that we've been able to acquire. But beyond the economics, this programme speaks to something deeper, it reflects our city's identity. These 4,400 hectares protect habitat, reduce urban heat, support biodiversity, and provide spaces for families to explore nature close to home. In many cases, they also serve as natural buffers that enhance our city's resilience against flood and fire. This is especially important as our city continues to grow. With some 1,300 people moving to South East Queensland every week, our green space is under pressure, but this programme ensured that key environmental corridors, many under threat from private sale or fragmentation, were locked away for public benefit. And if I could highlight one more thing, Madam Chair, the pace of this programme has been extraordinary. Council delivered this outcome not over decades, but in just four years, between 2016 and 2020, with over $80 million spent in the first three years alone. It was rapid, it was strategic, and it was effective. And the purchasing continues, not quite at the same rate, but strategically and deliberately. But just as with 93 Massey Street, Madam Chair, it's not just enough to purchase the land. Under the bushland acquisition programme, it then must be restored and maintained, and the bushland preservation levy goes to doing just that, preserving our bushland through the purchasing of blocks and also the restoring and maintenance of it. So at 93 Massey Street, which forms part of the Brighton wetlands, restoration of these non-titled wetland ecosystems have included tree planting and weed management, and I commend to the chamber.
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order, Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Over here in the corner.
Sorry, Councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B, amendment package R, and in particular around the rezoning of the land in Newham Road, Upper Mount Gravat. This was a part of the ward of Wishart, when I looked after that area for eight years, but it is also a place very close to my heart because it's where I lived for 23 years, on Broadwater Road, and very close to this corner as well. Interestingly, this amendment package reflects exactly what's happened in this area. It went from being called the Sticks when we moved out there in 1972 to now being almost middle-ring suburbs in Upper Mount Gravat. Mount Gravat Central now was the Terminus, and we still have people in the historical society that call it the Terminus, but the trams are long gone, and it is far gone from this being the end of the road when you're heading out into the outer suburbs as well. Newham Road and Broadwater Road were only subdivided very late in the 60s. As I said, I moved out with my family there in 1972, so there was a lot of industrial area around this area, and it was all Mansfield, so it's now Upper Mount Gravat, and Wishart wasn't even a suburb until the mid 90s. This area here in Newham Road was seen as the area that light industry that could actually service the new residential area through Mansfield, in particular around the two Mansfield schools at the time that were quite small, Mansfield State School and Mansfield State High School. They were originally petrol stations. The first one there on Newham Road was, is now NutraFresh, but across the road, there is actually three stories of townhouses that was a petrol station. They changed in the 90s to residential. NutraFresh got rid of the petrol station and everything that goes with that contamination, and they've been there for many, many decades, but they now have the opportunity to move somewhere that's probably a little larger and a little more suitable as well, further out in Brisbane, in our industrial areas. That councillor Allen has identified through our industrial strategy. The other thing too is this is no longer really reflecting low-impact industry. We are not losing significant industry area in here. We are seeing opportunities where people have gone to industry-style commercial, so you have things like Metropolitan Funerals, Auscare Agricultural Services, Mansfield Motors, Ideal Electrical. So they probably service light industry areas, but actually not light industry themselves. However, the one thing we do know, that this area of Upper Mount Gravat, which was Mansfield and then Wishart as well, is a very, very popular place for Brisbane residents to relocate. It is highly serviced by fantastic schools in the area. It's also got high-frequency buses along Newham Road, Broadwater Road, and thank you to councillor Murphy, even more highly frequent buses for the commuters along Newham Road and Broadwater Road in this area with the changes on the 30th of June. So for this reason, it's a fantastic opportunity that we see some very old commercial light industry buildings being able to be transformed into what will be, I think, some very well-designed and very useful residential. It's right beside Civic Fair, which is also a centre that has come and gone over the years, again, the beating heart of Mansfield in the 70s, has been through a transformation, has gone a little bit more medical and services, but I think with more feet on the street, with medium density to three stories, you'll see that the revitalisation of that precinct there, we'll see restaurants and groceries and stores that'll be able to be sustainable with the residents that come in as well. I do notice the thank you from councillor Strong around the amendment packages that are coming through thick and fast at the moment, and I'm sure we all like to thank councillor Adam Allen, but I also would like to thank the state government because we finally got some adults in the room up the other end that know how to move through and get some work done and actually deliver for the changes and amendments that we've been working on many years in this place. And thank you for the deputy premier for getting things off the desk that have been sitting there for a very long time. These are the changes we need to make sure that Brisbane can manage the housing crisis and make sure we have affordable and options in closer to the city areas as well, not just those in Polara and further out, and I recommend this package to the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Transport report. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 3rd of June be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Parry that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 3rd of June 2025 be adopted. All those in favour say, oh, sorry. So used to, yeah, we're not there yet. Please, councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Many people will be familiar with the planned Viola Place to Schneider Road connection on the Morton Bay cycleway, and last week, the Transport Committee had the pleasure of hearing about this upgrade at Viola Place. Once complete, this crucial connection will link cyclists from the Gateway Bridge to Kedron Brook and in the future, all the way to the Brisbane Airport. It will enable bike riders to travel more efficiently and safely around the precinct and will be a critical connection completion on the Morton Bay cycleway. I'm pleased to report that construction has now begun on this crucial link after what has been an extended period of delays. So to go all the way back in time, Madam Chair, council first committed to delivering this bikeway all the way back in 2013. Unfortunately, this project has faced a number of barriers to delivery. A property owner along the proposed route attempted to block the bikeway from being built for an extended period of time. Madam Chair, council also applied to the previous Labor state government for a land resumption to assist in completing the bikeway. This resumption and easement process began all the way back in 2015. Negotiations were first delayed while the owners of the land took legal action against the state government. After this was completed, council was finally able to issue a notice of intention to resume to the state government in 2020. What followed was a series of bureaucratic delays that would, quite frankly, make the writers of utopia blush, and sometimes in government, Madam Chair, the truth is stranger than fiction. The State Department of Resources raised a variety of technical concerns about the easement that council responded to. Back in May 2020, council appeared to have satisfied the department on the issues, only to be made aware of yet another objection. The application then sat with the Department of Resources for over a year while these issues were drawn out by the state government, then became clear to council in 2022 that the easement process was going to wither on the vine, that the application would not be approved by the state following this farcical process. The then Transport Minister Mark Bailey blamed the council for the delay, and then we decided to effectively withdraw the application and place it in again. He, at the same time, was cheered on by his Labor friends in the council opposition, and it took us withdrawing from the process and starting over entirely to get the easement to then progress. Madam Chair, after this long period of delays though, council has eventually triumphed. The easement has been granted, and the Viola Place to Schneider Road connection is now proceeding. By early next year, cyclists will be safely using this fantastic connection along the Morton Bay cycleway, and we want to learn from this process. Council will be making a submission to the state government's red tape review committee, asking for the power, asking to be granted the power to resume land for active transport purposes rather than the current process, which we suggest requires revisiting, which requires council to make an application for the resumption for road reserve only. You have to resume land for a bikeway, it has to be road reserve. You cannot resume land for a bikeway. We think that's wrong. We think active transport deserves to be prioritised along with road transport and road reserve, and that the state, or council should have the ability to apply to the state government to resume land for active transport links. We think that this is a fundamental right that should exist within the legislation, and we were told many, many years ago that it was able to be changed by the minister in a regulation almost overnight. That change was never made by the previous government, and I hope that this new government considers this change fulsomely in that red tape review process. So, Madam Chair, with the minute remaining to me, there's been a lot of chat and discussion about Brisbane's new bus network over the last, you know, last few days, last few weeks, all part of the natural process, Madam Chair, as people inevitably, irrespective of how much consultation, how much advertising you do, people will inevitably, and most of them will discover the changes in the weeks leading up to it and what it means for them. We must say, the vast majority of routes, there are only minor changes, but for some, there are major changes, and once again, we ask for Brisbane residents to jump on the there are major changes, and once again, we ask for Brisbane residents to jump onto journey planner, to check their journey, to use the tools available on council's website to plan for these changes so they're not caught out on the thirtieth of June when the network changes. These are changes that are absolutely necessary and need to be made in order for our network to grow into the future. Thanks very much, madam chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to acknowledge the start of construction this month on the six-hundred-metre shared path from Schneider Road to Viola Place. While it may be a small section, this link is a vital part of completing a safe cycling route to the Brisbane Airport precinct. This project has been well awaited and it's encouraging to see it finally coming to life by connecting key parts of the Moreton Bay cycleway, making it safer and easier for cyclists to travel through this area. Improved cycling infrastructure not only encourages healthier, more active lifestyles, but also reduces traffic congestion, especially considering the state of our city right now. In last week's committee meeting, I just wanted to put on the record that I noted how residents are eager to see Brisbane City Council implement a protected bikeway on Lamington Avenue through Denarji Road, complementing the new shared path project. Currently, Terminal Drive has a shared path, but it ends where the road becomes Lamington Avenue. While there are some yellow bicycle awareness symbols painted on the road, residents have told me there are no dedicated bike lanes or proper cycling infrastructure and exactly what our cyclists have been asking for. I raise this question in the committee, so I look forward to hearing councillor Wines answer it as he continues on from councillor Murphy's portfolio. Safety must be our top priority, and connected and protected bike lanes ensure riders of all ages and abilities can feel confident on our roads, reducing accidents and encouraging more people to leave their cars at home, and this is what I support. I hope the council continues to support this cycling community by investing in safe, connected infrastructure and putting the politics aside. I also want to congratulate the cycling advocates for their persistent efforts and many years of hard work, holding the council accountable on these important developments. Together, we can build a city where active transport isn't just an option, but a safe, accessible and preferred way to move. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on this item. It's genuinely encouraging to see progress on the Viola Place to Schneider Road connection, a key link to Moreton Bay cycleway, and this is something that the Active Transport Committee have been waiting for since as far back as two thousand and fourteen. And even though it's much delayed, it's still a win and it's welcome, a welcome one for the active transport community. The six-hundred-metre shared path isn't just concrete and lines, it's about connecting people to jobs, to the airport, to the rest of our bikeway network, and it's a great example of what happens when council does the critical work on infrastructure. So I do pass on the congratulations. But while we're supporting this project and it's great to see, I do want to raise a concern that many residents have highlighted with me, which is, why isn't Lamington Avenue included as a part of this delivery? Back in two thousand and twenty-three, residents and bike riders put forward an e-petition calling for improvements to Lamington Avenue. Council's response at the time acknowledged that this was a key east-west connection and said it was under consideration, but two years later, we've been left in the dark about when it would actually happen. We're investing in Viola Place, but we're asking riders to continue their journey along unsafe and disconnected stretch on Lamington, but we're also asking them to continue their journey along unsafe and disconnected stretch down Lamington Road. That doesn't make sense, especially when we know these routes don't exist in isolation. People are travelling whole corridors. So my question is, when, my question is, why aren't these two projects planned and delivered together? And when will Lamington Avenue get the upgrades the community has asked council for and council has agreed to investigation? Or will this be another ten-plus-year wait? We can't keep rolling out active transport infrastructure in bits and pieces. Across Brisbane, there are still too many dangerous missing links in our active transport network that put riders and walkers at risk every day. In areas like Highgate Hill and West End, the absence of safe cycling infrastructure on routes like Volter Street and Dornoch Terrace forces people into unsafe traffic conditions or onto steep, poorly-designed detours. The Kangaroo Point bikeway gap near Dockside disrupts what should be one of our city's best riverside corridors, while the North Brisbane bikeway still has key gaps between some of the completed staging, pushing riders back onto very busy roads. Over in the inner south, Annelie Road remains a glaring omission, and even though there is work towards it, the work that myself and through you, Chair, councillor Johnston and I are trying to do to get community consultation and involvement is being ignored. This administration has also failed to deliver a separated link, a separated link to Indrapilidi and St Lucia UQ, ignoring thousands of students and workers who could be using active transport every day. These missing links don't just make travel less convenient, they make it dangerous and they undermine the city's claims to support active transport and a sustainable mobility city. If we're serious about supporting people to hop on a bicycle or to walk or to hop on scooters instead of taking their car, then we need to think in terms of connected corridors, not isolated segments. I support this project, I'm glad to see it finally happening, but I also call on council, the LMP council, to give the community a clear timeline on Lamington Avenue, to talk about where it's at and to make sure this momentum doesn't stop here.
Further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Murphy. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Infrastructure, councillor Wine.
Thanks, madam chair. I move that the infrastructure committee meeting held on Tuesday the third of June twenty twenty-five be adopted.
One moment, please, councillor Wines.
Oh, sorry. Need a second.
Okay. Do you have a point of order, councillor Strong?
Yes, yes. Could we ask that item C be taken for serial item for voting purposes?
Yeah, we need to move it first, but, yep.
Sorry.
Seconded, madam chairman.
Could I move that?
Moved by councillor Wine, seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the infrastructure committee meeting dated Tuesday the third of June twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor, for debate or just for voting, councillor Strong?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, can I move that the item C be taken for serial item for voting purposes?
Voting, thank you. Councillor Wine.
Thanks, madam chair. I'm just here to speak to this item. In particular, there was three items on the agenda last week, the first of which was a presentation on council's work on Kelvin Grove Road and Lower Clifton Road and Musk Avenue on the border of Kelvin Grove and Red Hill. The presentation was made by one of our officers, Tom Peters, from the CPO area. The project was funded through the Major Traffic Improvements Intersections Programme, or MTII, and was completed on the nineteenth of May last month. It's a programme which funds many medium-sized jobs throughout the city that aren't the large-scale ones but have a meaningful improvement for mobility in the city. So Kelvin Grove Road carries more than fifty thousand vehicles a day, and this location did report a number of collisions, five between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. There was also one pedestrian, one pedestrian was hit by a vehicle, I'm not sure how else to place it, crossing across Kelvin Grove Road. This project looks to do two or three things. Firstly, improve the efficiency of the road network. It does that by reducing the number of conflict points and the amount of red call on particular movements. So the vehicles entering the intersection will, the intersection reflects the uses as people approach the intersection, it will more reflective of the balance of motor vehicles approach it, however, also it does allow for more throughput through the principal movement northwest through Kelvin Grove Road. While we were doing that, it also allows us an opportunity to improve pedestrian safety in that intersection. So we were able to remove a conflict point where there was effectively a green light and a green man, that does not exist anymore. Not that that was the cause of the pedestrian accident, however, that oftentimes has the potential for one, that does not exist anymore. By moving the right turn from Lower Clifton, from the intersection to a southern point, removing that, that conflict point, it also removed the need for a conflict point between the traffic that pointed to turn left in that intersection, improving efficiency, improving safety. There's also an opportunity taken on the Musk Avenue side, which I would call the Kelvin Grove Village side, the QT Kelvin Grove side of the road, of Kelvin Grove Road, it allowed a number of pedestrian upgrades, which was also an opportunity to improve cycling access through that area as well. So this saw a meaningful safety and efficiency upgrade for motorists and throughput on Kelvin Grove Road, while at the same time improving safety for pedestrians and improving safety and accessibility for pedestrians and cyclists, both at Kelvin Grove, Adalou Clifton, but on the pedestrian and cyclist side, particularly on the Musk Avenue side, which again leads into a well-developed area with a significant number of university students. So in so many ways, it was an opportunity to provide a meaningful improvement across mobility uses for a range of communities that saw efficiencies and improvements in a range of ways, and we hope that the potential for incidents in the future has been significantly reduced, while at the same time allowing for more, for more vehicles to move more efficiently through that. And now when I say that, there may be some criticism that it sounds like I'm talking about private motor vehicles, and while that's true, it also allows our bus system to carry a greater number of vehicles through the intersection. In particular, the three, four, five, which is one of the most heavily patronised bus services in the city, uses this route, will become more and more consistent in their time and use because of this upgrade. So it's one more example of how we're keeping our city moving. There were two petitions considered. One was the naming of a footbridge in Wavel Heights in Cressy Street to be named Eileen Jean Green Footbridge. In the end, it will be called Eileen Green Crossing. There was some debate about whether Eileen, like many members of her generation, used her first or second name, I am assured she went by Eileen. The family will be engaged to double-check that, that was discussed at length. There was also an opportunity to discuss the Barton Road Hawthorn Road intersection, which we had a public speaker about some time ago, which has been discussed in this place in the past, and there was an opportunity considered for potential improvements, which was listed in line with citywide priorities.
Further speakers? Councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on Kelvin Grove Road, Lower Clifton Terrace and Musk Avenue/Red Hill intersection upgrade, which forms the subject of this committee presentation. As a local to the Red Hill and Kelvin Grove side of my ward, I'm very familiar with this intersection. This is the entrance to the Kelvin Grove Urban Village, Kelvin Grove QT, two schools and a Kelvin Grove Markets. It is also a passageway to Victoria Park Barabun. I understand Kelvin Grove Road is a major road corridor to the inner city that carries fifty thousand vehicles per day. I also understand that as a congesting busting project, this upgrade gives very little consideration to pedestrian cyclist safety. In fact, even at the intersection bike path on Musk Avenue leading into Kelvin Grove Road, it has been removed. Whilst I'm very grateful for a wombat pedestrian crossing on the slip lane on Musk Avenue, I do need to question how the administration prioritises where wombat crossings are constructed. There are many other areas in my ward that are desperate for safe pedestrian crossings like Lang Parade, Roman Parade, Rosa Lee and Latrobe Terrace. I know as a local to the area that the pedestrian crossing that has been installed on the Musk Avenue slip lane has very little foot traffic due to the direction of pedestrian flows at this intersection, especially when it compared to other very dangerous road crossings that my residents experience every day, whether it's experiencing near miss or having to make an emergency mad dash to avoid being hit by a driver. I did point out issues when the initial design was presented to me about the dangers that pedestrians and cyclists face at this intersection of Kelvin Grove Road. Even my great-grandfather, when he was alive, was hit by a motorcyclist whilst crossing Kelvin Grove Road, and that was before it was a seven-lane road. So it has been ingrained in me at a very early age that this is not a safe place for pedestrians. Now, as a councillor, I understand full well how this LMP administration has run our city for twenty years, prioritises congestion busting for motorists over the safety of our community and our children. The crossing from Musk Avenue across Kelvin Grove Road to Lower Clifton Terrace is frequently used by pedestrians. This is also where two major accidents occurred. Tragically, in January twenty twenty-four, thirty-two-year-old QTPH student Arjun Srinivas lost his life. He was a dear friend to many students and lecturers and a local to our neighbourhood. A month later, I saw another man laying on the road in the exact same spot that Arjun was hit. Sadly, I don't know if this man survived or sustained lifelong injuries. Heartbreaking to the family and friends, and my condolences to the family and friends. We know where the Lord Mayor stands on pedestrian safety. The Lord Mayor said through the chair, and I quote, "The only upgrades that the Greens support are actually downgrades. Things that slow traffic down, traffic lights, speed humps, pedestrian crossings, things that make traffic go slower, they are downgrades." Our community deserves to feel safe when walking or cycling in our neighbourhood. I am supporting this presentation simply because the project included a wombat pedestrian crossing on a slip lane on Musk Avenue. However, this intersection upgrade has not resolved major pedestrian safety issues that will continue for the local community.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak briefly on the items and particularly the presentation regarding the intersection upgrade. It was an interesting, was a very interesting presentation because there are a number of things that have been done at this location that council refuses to do in other parts of the city, and I thank councillor Chong Wah for her local knowledge about this. Now, interestingly, there is a zebra or wombat crossing, which is a zebra on a speed platform on the slip lane to an arterial road. Now, that is something that council refuses to do on either a district-access road on Annelie Road, Annelie, or on an arterial road, Ipswich Road, Annelie, into Eckeburn Road, which is a, I think, a suburban route. So it is really interesting that, that apparently these design solutions, when the LMP wants them, are perfectly allowable, even if the local councillor acknowledges perhaps they don't address the real problem, but they have put in this design solution, but they refuse to allow the same design solution in other parts of the city, where clearly there would be a benefit to local residents who have no safe crossing point on slip lanes. Now, in the Move Safe recommendations back in two thousand and seventeen eighteen, this council made it a priority to say it would address uncontrolled slip lanes because they recognised they were dangerous and unsafe for pedestrians. So great for Musk Avenue, even though, as councillor Chong Wah says, it may not be, you know, there may be other locations where it could be just as useful. I am certainly aware of the hypocrisy of this LMP council by allowing wombat crossings on slip lanes in some areas, but then refusing to have even a zebra crossing, if not a wombat, in places in Annelie. That double standard is outrageous. I am happy for the people of Kelvin Grove if it is of benefit to them, but the residents of Annelie are being treated like second-class citizens by this LMP administration who refuse to acknowledge that this solution is just as possible in Annelie as it is in Kelvin Grove.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, madam chair. I rise to briefly speak on item B, which is the footbridge or crossing at Cressy Street and Wavel Heights. This is in my ward and I know the area quite well, and I think the, I did want to just quickly read the petition wording because I think it says it all. Eileen Green was quite persistent in getting this bridge put in place in nineteen seventy-three, so the petition basically says, "We wish to honour the memory of Eileen Jean Green by naming the footbridge in Cressy Street/Wavel Heights after her. She first asked the council for a footbridge in the early nineteen seventies, and after initial rejection, continued advocating to different councillors to finally have the council build a wooden bridge in nineteen seventy-three." Now, that bridge that was built in nineteen seventy-three deteriorated over time and certainly since then, it's been replaced with a steel and concrete structure, which is very, very heavily used, and certainly it's a great attribute for the local area. And so Eileen passed away in two thousand and sixteen and her family was keen to sort of have her doggedness recognised by naming the bridge and hence the Eileen Green Crossing will be. by naming the bridge and hence the Eileen Green Crossing will be named in coming weeks and months. So a great outcome for the family.
Further speakers. We'll now put, oh yes, sorry, councillor Wines, clarify.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, I appreciate all contributions. I do, there's something I do feel I need to say, though. I'm going to have to ask councillor Chong Wah at some point to consider putting community first and not the Green Party first. Time and time again, she comes in this place with prepared notes that indicate she provides no consideration for the benefit of the people of Kelvin Grove or Red Hill, or really anyone in Paddington, but pushes a Green Party political line over and over again.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, councillor Wines has used she, which I know that you will want to address immediately as it is a breach of the standing orders that you've created.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Wines, if you could refer to councillors by their correct time.
And all I would say to councillor Chong Wah is that the hollow and gratuitous attack she makes on fellow councillors because they belong to a different political party is...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
This is the rule that you've created, Madam Chair. Councillor Wines used she again, which you have said is not allowed in this chamber, and I would draw your attention to it for ruling.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And as councillor Chong Wah's comments clearly indicate, the councillor Chong Wah did not understand the presentation.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, what was your ruling, Madam Chair, to my point of order?
It's per what I said to your first point of order and councillor Wines just said, referred to her, to councillor Chong Wah twice. So obviously, he's doing the right thing now.
Didn't you just call councillor Wines to speak again?
Yes.
Yes, so what was your ruling on my point of order? I just want to know what the ruling was, that's all.
At the same as your first response.
You didn't make a second response.
Your first point of order, thank you, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And can I just say, I really don't appreciate councillor Johnston using the points of orders in this manner as an attempt to, what's a pretty cynical attempt, to run cover for councillor Chong Wah to interrupt my speeches because councillor Johnston has some sort of point she wants to make well beyond, well beyond the standards and expectations of ordinary debate and discussion in this place. It's clearly designed to slow down this debate. It's clearly designed to slow down.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Just on relevance, I don't think points of order are relevant to the infrastructure committee. So I wonder if you could draw councillor Wines back to something else.
Thank you, councillor. I know councillor Wines, you're responding to what has been said, but if you can please come back to the report and the response.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Councillor Cassidy makes a rare valid point that points of order should not be used over and over and over again during a councillor's presentation.
Thank you, councillor Wines, let's come back to the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But I think my point, the point is that councillor Chong Wah should, for a moment, take her political blinders off and do the right thing by her community. This, councillor Chong Wah attends almost all of my committees as an observer. This was discussed at length. It was explained to her at length, by her, I mean councillor Chong Wah. Councillor Chong Wah listened intently from what I could tell. And when I addressed her in the meeting that there were significant pedestrian improvements, she nodded and smiled. And now she comes here and attacks us. So sometimes I wonder whether councillor Chong Wah's opinions that she presents in this place are hers and her genuinely felt positions.
Can you, councillor Johnson?
I'm sure you know where I'm going with this, Madam Chairman, that's the third she. And look, Madam Chairman, I only raise this because I...
Point of order, Madam Chair. This is an activist order by councillor Johnston.
Councillor, I've heard you, and I'm reminding you, councillor Wines, and I'll astutely follow you, councillor.
Are you going to address councillor Wines for shouting over the top of me? Are you going to address councillor Wines?
I have addressed yours and I have addressed councillor Wines, don't keep questioning me.
I'm sorry, it's just the double standard.
No, councillor, this is not for debate.
I've been warned when you won't warn anybody else.
Well, this is not for debate and I caution you, you are showing unsuitable meeting conduct currently.
Point of order.
And councillor Wines, if you can please follow that. And I'll be following you astutely too, councillor Johnson. Point of order, councillor Chong Wah.
Misrepresentation.
I know, you're misrepresentation.
I suspect councillor Chong Wah said at no point did she smile and nod during my, during my presentation and that she probably never addressed me in a positive manner. But this is what I would say to councillor Chong Wah. Consider what you actually believe. We take oaths in this place to represent our views, but not to have our speeches written for us and then read out. Green Party, what are clearly Green Party hyper-partisan speeches that are on the borderline of sanity, come in here and present them as though they're your own opinion. I mean, councillor Chong Wah may believe those things, but I doubt a rational, reasonable person would believe some of the things that she says in this place, one of which is a suspension of reality that would allow one to believe that there weren't significant pedestrian improvements made at this intersection. Now, there was a particular group known to many of us called Space for Cycling, who on their Facebook took time to praise the safety improvements at this particular intersection upgrade. And I'd like councillors to recall that Space for Cycling never says anything nice about the LNP council in this place at any point. They are a pretty biased group of people whose bias has challenged their credibility. Yet they still found an opportunity to...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, councillors are not supposed to denigrate members of the public. Space for Cycling members are just general cycling people and these comments are very derogatory.
Councillor Johnson, I don't uphold that point of order, please continue, councillor Wines.
Many of them are, but many of the vocal ones aren't. And they, I believe, I believe if, well, said of Space for Cycling is, even in the Facebook post about this, where much of it was very praiseful, they didn't miss the opportunity to twist the knife on us again. And that's not lost on people in this chamber either. So what I would say is, this is a, this project is a marked improvement for this intersection. When you sift through councillor Chong Wah's partisan, her hyper-partisan attack on it, there was actually praise for the pedestrian upgrades before the Green Party hyper-partisan political rhetoric came in behind it. And the same, Space for Cycling, full of praise until their biases had to show. So what I'm saying is, I think if you're being fair-minded, this is a project that improves efficiency for motorists and public transport users. It improves access for pedestrians and removes many conflict points. And it improves the use for cyclists, particularly on the eastern side. And I think that gratuitous attacks from a partisan point of view have to be called out.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Councillor Chong Wah, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I was sitting behind you in committee where the PowerPoint is... Yes, sorry, councillor Wines. I was sitting behind you in committee where the PowerPoint was, was my computer was dying on that particular committee meeting. So there was no opportunity for you to see me nodding and smiling in relation to that presentation.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now put item A and B to, councillor Wines, thank you. We'll now put items A and B. We'll now put items A and B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. All those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and seven against.
That is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of June, 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 3rd of June, 2025 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A was a committee presentation on a development site located at 169 Wellington Road, East Brisbane. The subject site is zoned for mixed use and is located in the Woolangaba PDA. The approval was previously granted on this site for 50 units and a food and drink outlet. The change application was lodged and recently approved, included an additional two stories or an additional 22 units. It also made modifications to the facade and building materiality. The application will now allow the site to deliver 72 units and 62 square metres of commercial space. The site is within walking distance of bus stops, a ferry terminal, key employment areas, as well as local landmarks such as Raymond Park and the Gabba Stadium. The nine-storey tower will provide additional density in a well-service location. The building features include ground activation with a 6.7-metre-wide arcade, upgraded streetscape, creative lighting, a widened verge on Wellington Road to five metres and an integrated landscape on the ground floor and rooftop, including 12.2% deep planting. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just very briefly, this development is good in scale and location. Just note, though, that some of the information, supporting information, I guess, that was given during the presentation and now by councillor Allen paints, I guess, a rosier picture of its proximity to amenities and public and active transport as well, which sort of sugarcoats, I guess, the delivery of this kind of density in places where it already exists and has open spaces and public and active transport close by, but not as accessible as it should be. And this is a good case in point. So councillor Allen mentioned its proximity to the Gabba Stadium, which is going to be demolished by the LNP. So it won't exist. There's a Cross River Rail station at the Gabba, which was referenced. And then we heard in the presentation, one of the question, a question from an LNP councillor, thinking it was quite close to the new Gabba Cross River Rail station. And we were told it was 1.5 kilometre walk. We're told it's very close to the Mowbray Park, ferry terminal and to bus stations on the other side of Wellington Road, but not told that there are no crossing points across the, how many lanes is Wellington Road? Four, five? Four lanes, four lanes, all going in the same direction, granted. So minor details around that. So I get that there are things that are sort of five or 600 metres away and in some instances 1.5 kilometres away, but they're not particularly accessible. And I accept that at the front of this development, the streetscape and public footpath is going to be immensely improved. There'll be access through the building as well and it's close to Raymond Park. But the other sort of selling points we get are really not that best practice when it comes to proximity to active and public transport and other amenity items. So we never hear, we never hear how those sort of things will be addressed. So it's, again, something we support and support this type of development in this location. But when we talk about needing the infrastructure to keep up with development, this is a good case in point, despite it being an area that is already very highly densely populated and will be more so, we don't see that level of infrastructure that council should be delivering or leveraging developers to deliver following through. We saw that recently in council Griffiths area with the neighbourhood plan, increasing, increasing density in development, something we supported, but also with the caveat that you need to be able to have infrastructure to support the way people want to live and get to work and not make these streets and public areas more congested than they need to be. So, you know, we support this, but there's also many things, this is true to form for the LNP, that they don't talk about the challenges that they will be creating in doing this without providing any solutions in the short term. And it's just kicking it down the road further and further. And this is why we need to see more infrastructure aligned with the delivery of housing here in Brisbane as well. So we don't see our standard of living slip further and further down as a result of these types of developments.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on this development and this item and this presentation. Again, this used to be in the Gabba Ward, this area, and it's now on the border. And there's a couple of important things that I just really want to highlight because, as I said earlier today, the Greens do support. I support, community supports growth. And we know that there needs to be, there are going to be density increases in this area. But the key, of course, of the density increases in the area is the infrastructure so that people can get to their jobs, can get to other places and not have to be in cars. And while there will be public realm, through you, Chair, as councillor Cassidy said, improvements to the front of, and the footpath and probably the public space of this development. It is, however, very clear that in this area that has had rapid development in a short period of time, that there are challenges with infrastructure. And not just challenges with infrastructure, I want to talk about a particular infrastructure point, which is the Wellington Road crossing. And so there has been a crossing designed in this area. It was budgeted for $2 million, from memory, in 2023, when I had the, when I, when I had the briefing about it. And that crossing, when I had the briefing, was told to me that was incredibly important because at the time, anywhere between 132 people per hour were running across a dangerous four-lane crossing. Okay, four lanes, they were running through up to 132 people in this area. That's a lot, right? We had the briefing, we had the design, we had the costing in 2023. And here we are in 2025 and still no crossing. So while we are undeniably supportive of this development, we want to see this development happen in this area. What we are continually seeing is developments being approved in these future high-density areas without the infrastructure that was already tagged a couple of years ago, that has been designed, that has been planned. And not only that, this crossing is actually incredibly important for whom? The kids attending East Brisbane State School. If we are a council that says we want to be sustainable and we want to have a livable city, I will read again, then we need public transport increases, then we need active transport increases, we need facility, community facilities, and we need the infrastructure deliveries to make this happen. So while we do support this, I must say again, the problem, the safety of pedestrians, the safety of children continues to be kicked down the road. I will just state, so that it's on the public record, this will be my third budget and for the third year I have put on the Wellington Road project as a priority project delivery. And I'm hopeful, because the board that I share is with the deputy mayor and the Chair of Finance in Cooperu Ward, deputy mayor Cunningham through you, that this is also as important to her, through you, Chair, as it is to me and the people of the Gabba Ward and the people on that border and the Cooperu Ward. This is the third year I've put it down as a priority project. I hope to see it in the budgets next week. However, I am doubtful. Again, we will support growth, we'll support this project, but stop kicking needed infrastructure deliveries to keep people safe, to get people to work, to get people to play down the track till who knows when.
Further speakers. No further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everybody for their contribution to the debate. You know, look, it's terrific to see at least tacit support from councillor Cassidy and councillor Massey. The reality is, we are delivering much... The reality is we are delivering much-needed housing in this location. And while much was made of the the distance to walk to the Cross River Rail station, the reality is there is good public transport close to this particular site. There's bus stops up on Litton Road, there's signalised crossing points on Litton Road to get to the ferry. I don't consider four or five hundred metres to be a particularly long walk. So it is well-serviced. At the end of the day, could the site be closer to public transport? Sure. But this is the development that our Development Service team was presented with, and they've provided an approval on this to provide much-needed housing. The other thing that wasn't mentioned was the development is going to include an arcade to improve accessibility through the site, across Wellington Road and to Raymond Park. So there are a lot of really good aspects to this development. And while we could always hope for the public transport to be closer, it is good in this location. Certainly, a lot of people around the city would love to have public transport as close to their house as this one will have. So I'll leave it at that.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Wines for a division. Councillors' ayes to my right and noes to my left. Councillor Griffith, what are you... Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-two in favour.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. councillor Marks, Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, the third of January, sorry, third of June, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Adams that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the third of June, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee presentation that we had on Tuesday, the third of June, was an update on the invasive species management of yellow crazy ants. So yellow crazy ants are an invasive pest originating from Africa. They are five millimetres long with long legs, antennae, and are categorised by their uniformly yellow-coloured and a sticky brown abdomen. You went too soon. As you can see from our show and tell, the ant here is not to scale. And we won't be tabling it all either. We're just going to do it as a show and tell, because news officers would be very unhappy with us if they didn't get their ant back. So these ants, thank you, thank you councillor Toomey, these ants thrive in shady wet areas and can be recognised by their erratic walking style if disturbed, which is kind of a bit weird. But anyway, there you go. The things you learn in committee. They are also a highly aggressive species that can spray formic acid as a defence mechanism, which can cause skin and eye irritations. They do threaten horticulture and tourism industries, and they will swarm to kill larger prey, which has the potential to reshape entire ecosystems. Yellow crazy ants are capable of achieving extremely high population densities and, as such, are ranked as one of the world's most invasive species by the International Union for Conservation of Nature and are recognised as a priority invasive ant species to manage. So they were first reported in Cairns in two thousand and one and made their way to Brisbane in two thousand and four. They were initially managed by the Queensland Government. An eradication in Queensland was deemed to be unfeasible, and so they were delegated to affected landholders to be managed under the Biosecurity Act two thousand and forty, which now requires local councils to establish a biosecurity plan and programme. So under our biosecurity plan for Brisbane, crazy yellow ants are listed as a high-risk species. At first, nine infestations were identified in Brisbane, but with careful management, only three active colonies remain. So then, since then, we have developed and approved our biosecurity plan, collaborated with other governments and international bodies, engaged CSIRO to develop an eradication plan, and undertaken surveys to understand expansion rates. I also wanted to note at this point that a lot of this work, or actually all of this work, is carried out carried out under the City Standards Programme. So the active colony at the Gap was selected to trial a treatment programme using the CSI's methodology due to its proximity to significant natural areas and waterways. So it involved a collaborative delivery strategy by council encompassed of three treatments spaced exactly three months apart. The committee was then shown maps of the extent of the active colony at the Gap and plans to expand the trial area to the southern part of the colony. Following the treatment, only a few hotspots remain, with the majority of area showing no presence of the ants, and council will continue to undertake additional treatments in the area where they remain. In addition to, we work with the regulators on appropriate baits. We treat the riparian zones, surveying the hotspots, monitoring sites, conducting advocacy work, knowledge sharing across the national network. And if this methodology is proven effective, as it has so far, the programme will then move to the active colony in Acacia Ridge. And as I said, this has been ably undertaken under the stewardship of councillor Hutton in City Standards. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffith.
Yes, yellow crazy ant presentation was very, very interesting. And I note that they've been in the city for twenty-one years. They first arrived in the city in two thousand and four. I suppose my interest in this is that it's the two locations and how we responded as a city. So in the Gap, we've gone full in, we've found all this money, we've found all these offices, we've got an important area surrounded by residential areas, surrounded by green space, and that's where we're looking after. The other site is over at the Gap, over at Acacia Ridge. And at Acacia Ridge, oh, that's not so important. In fact, nothing's being done over Acacia Ridge at the moment. Acacia Ridge, I do note, is near councillor Hutton's ward, but it is also near councillor Marks' ward as well. So it is, it is an important area to look at. And I was wondering about this, and I was asking a council officer, one of our very dedicated, very good environmental officers, what's going on here? Why are we, why are we spending money in the Gap but not in Acacia Ridge? And that officer said, I'll counsel, the theory goes like this. And I said, what's, what's the theory? He said, think of it as the Titanic. I thought, oh, this would be good. And the other officer looked around as this conversation was going on. And he goes, well, you're on the sinking Titanic. Your ward, Maruka Ward, is a sinking Titanic. And if there's two Titanic's and one's sinking and one's floating towards the iceberg, which one should we save? And I said, oh, which one? They go, well, of course, the one that hasn't hit the iceberg. We should put all our efforts into that one, because that's the most important one, the one that's still got the passengers. And for me, that's it all about this administration and about how we're doing with the environment. We're putting a whole lot of resources into our very perfect areas, our good areas, our, strangely enough, our liberal areas, our wealthy areas. They get a lot of attention. And as we can see here, the Gap just comes up number one in terms of this. But we have a problem at Acacia Ridge. And what the officer said about Acacia Ridge is, actually, that's an industrial area, but that's actually where there's a lot of scrap metal. And it seems like we think that these animals arrived in Australia in drink cans because they were coming over to be recycled. So if we knew that they were in drink cans, or we knew they're in scrap metal, then why aren't we putting as much priority on that so that we're not transferring them to other parts of the city? I suppose it comes back to this story about the two Titanic's. And when I tell residents that this is council's attitude to their environment, they go, uh-uh, no way. That's not how this council, that's not how Brisbane City Council should be operating. We're not on a sinking ship. We want to do everything to save our city and save our environment. And we think we're entitled to as many resources, yeah, in the industrial and areas that obviously news don't think are important, rather than in the areas where we just keep throwing resources after resources after resources, the privileged areas of the city. And this, I keep seeing this repeated time and time and time again. And I've seen it for twenty-two years, and it's not right. And this presentation is just another example of our city looking after the well-heeled, looking after the good areas, and gee, those areas that are low associate economic, you know, they're, they're being disturbed by a lot of industry. We won't worry about them. They're not important. Don't put resources to them. So for me, this yellow crazy ant presentation was very telling. And it was really telling not just about the crazy ants, but more so about this administration, this LNP administration, and how they don't value everyone in the city. They just value some people. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to channel a former councillor in this place, call councillor Geraldine Knapp. I have never heard such poppycock in my entire life. I don't know what committee meeting the councillor Griffith was sitting in, but that verbally and blatant misconstruing of what Mr Wilson presented to us is unbelievable, absolute poppycock. It was clearly explained that the Gap was a pilot project, that they had decided to work through the process of trying to eliminate it, where it was more important around residents, hundreds of residents, in a creek area that, God forbid, was in an LNP ward. And that they had only recently discovered that they probably came over in Cairns, but now, apparently, we've known that for fifty years and we should have been sorting it. And the next steps in this programme was to move down to Acacia Ridge and start the process through a fairly, fairly, very less populated by humans area in the industrial areas to go and work with the businesses down there. That was blatant verbling of what was said in that committee, incorrect from woe to go. And a clown is a nice thing to say. That was an absolute disgrace to councillor Griffith, and you should apologise to all councillors in this programme.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And if the chamber can give me some grace for my voice, I'm recovering from a cold. I have to agree with councillor Adams on councillor Griffith's summation of what was presented. The primary reason for the trial in the Gap was because it was in a residential area. Not only was it in a residential area, there's also a shopping centre, a high school, bike paths, where people walk their dogs. Now, when these ants squirt this formic acid, it can blind animals, it can blind people's cats, it can blind people's dogs, it can attack birds. And part of having the two waterway corridors through the area being Inogra Creek and Fish Creek, it was very, very important to see if this trial would work. The success of this trial means that we can go out to other parts of the city. We can build on the success that has been found in the Gap along Inogra Creek and Fish Creek. That said, there's still work to do. It's not all gone. We've only got a few hotspots left. But the key to the success of this programme is the officers' diligence, and not only the officers, there were contractors involved as well, the cooperation of the residents, and the weather. You can't poison these ants when it's wet. It doesn't work. You need three clear days of dry weather. And this is highly important for the success of the trial. So I think councillor Griffith should be very grateful that the officers have come across a method of treating these ants, not only for his residents in an industrial area, but an industrial area par se. The important part of this trial is to knock these ants on the head, because further downstream are other wards. Madam Chairman, as much as I like councillor Griffith's, I mean, the blatant politicisation of going after yellow crazy ants.
Thank you, councillor Toomey. Councillor Griffiths and others, you've been asked not to call out what other councillors on their feet. It is disrespectful, and you are constantly doing it. Please control your outbursts and let the other councillors on their feet speak. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think one thing is important to note, that this was a trial. If it was unsuccessful, well, then we would be trialling something else. And that's the key fact. These officers have been brave enough to go out and try something. With the help of the CSIRO, they are giving this thing a crack. And it's not only to the benefit of all the Liberal wards, it's to the benefit of all the Labor wards and all the Green wards and all the independent wards, because these little buggers get around. And knocking them on the head as soon as we can is key to the success of eroding yellow crazy ants. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Further speakers. Councillor Marks, write of reply.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have to say, I agree with councillor Adams and councillor Toomey. I'm astonished. But anyway, I shouldn't be after all these years in this place. I just want to reiterate two things. Well, firstly, I'd like to inform whoever the council officers, that's which history he's reading and telling councillor Griffiths through you, Madam Chair, that there was two Titanic's. Can I put on the record, there was actually only one Titanic, and it did hit the iceberg, and it did sink, and many people died. The other thing I want to reiterate is the very second-to-last sentence I read out, which said, if the methodology is proven effective, the programme will move to the active colony in Acacia Ridge. Thank you.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Just a question on how much time we'll have left on our regular meeting.
We have about forty-seven minutes. City Standards Committee report, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the third of June, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adamin that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, third of June, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, our City Standards Committee was provided with an update on how we are embracing smart technology to enhance safety, strengthen our regulatory compliance, and deliver better outcomes for the people of Brisbane. Through the proactive work of our Compliance and Regulatory Services team, Brisbane is emerging as a leader in the deployment of technology to tackle urban challenges and improve service delivery, whether it's deterring illegal behaviour, improving officer safety, or enabling data-driven enforcement. This council is investing in innovation that keeps Brisbane moving. A key highlight of the presentation was council's investment in the static parking camera enforcement. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had fifty-two thousand complaints that were made about illegal parking. The static cameras will help us detect illegal parking that causes traffic congestion and safety issues, especially in our busy inner-city areas. The trial began in October, two thousand and twenty-four with four cameras across two locations, expanded in February, two thousand and twenty-five with three more additional units, and is now on track to deliver an additional two hundred static parking enforcement cameras across Brisbane by June thirty. These cameras are all about keeping Brisbane moving. Motorists illegally stopping in Clearway Motorists illegally stopping in clearways, non-stopping zones, bus zones, loading zones or on yellow lines will be the focus of this congestion busting initiative. If someone parks in one of our busways, it literally takes up an entire lane. And we have seen from the footage in these trials that buses and motorists have had to manoeuvre around these illegally parked vehicles, and it is really slowing down our city. These cameras are a practical solution that promotes compliance and eases traffic congestion while allowing our officers to focus on more serious and complex issues. The, the technology is backed by clear signage and encourages positive driver behaviour and deters parking before it even occurs. We also received an update on the Caution Flag Project, which is currently still under development. This is a custom-built mobile app that allow our compliance officers to report and view real-time hazards in the field. Officers can drop a geo-tag, caution marker onto a digital map, improving the team's situational awareness and supporting dynamic risk management. This initiative strengthens the officer's safety and ensures that our officers are better informed when attending potentially high-risk locations. It's practicable, practical, it's scalable and it demonstrates council's commitment to ensuring the safety of our employees. Now Chair, we know that our council officers, whether it's, we know that our council officers do an incredible job, whether it be out on the suburban streets or in a laneway or patrolling a park, and they deserve the right to feel safe at work. That's why this council has invested in infield-ready tools to support our officer's safety, including body-walled cameras, tape radios and Guardian Angel devices. I'd like to thank councillor Toomey for very, very capably modelling the vests during our committee presentation, I should have brought it along here today like the crazy ant, and it was a fantastic demonstration, thank you. I also note the interest from councillor Johnson in the body-worn camera component of the presentation. Footage from these, from these recordings can be used by council as, as it considers appropriate, including for making complaints. The committee members were informed about a recent example where a complaint was made to police after a serious incident, where a parking officer was threatened with a knife while on patrol in Kangaroo Point. The officer followed his training and removed himself immediately from the situation. Critically, the body-worn cameras had recorded the incident. This footage was shared with Queensland Police and is now assisting with their investigations to not only keep our officers safe, but also our wider community. These technologies are essential tools that improve responsive times, ensure accountability and provide peace of mind for both the public and our officers. While this all shows Chair, what this all shows Chair is a consistent and clear strategy from the Shrima Council to use this technology to improve compliance outcomes, enhance community safety for both the public and our officers, deliver smarter, faster service for our residents and ultimately to keep Brisbane moving. I leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on the, what I suspect is the final or second to last final City Standards Committee report, based on the news from the Lord Mayor today. I've been a councillor for 17 years and I think for all of that time I've been on this committee or a predecessor name of this committee. It is the committee that oversees the operations of Brisbane City Council, whether that be parking enforcement, whether that be tree trimming, potholes, waste, you, you name it. It's, it's the operational and the key part of Brisbane City Council. Now, uh, part of this council was dramatically impacted by a very bad restructure several years ago and the announcement by the Lord Mayor today means...
Councillor, I do want to, you know, remind you that this is not about the restructure, this is, this is about the report. And I ask you to come back to that and if you want to address the restructure in your general business, you may do so.
Thank you, yes. And I am addressing the report because my point that I would like to make is that the City Standards reports like these won't be happening again. These key operational areas regarding enforcement and other things that I've just mentioned that the committee handles are going to be folded into the Infrastructure Committee, where one committee will now oversight the two major areas, including the enforcement issues, which are important to all of us and addressed in this report today. So I just want to say, I think that this is an appalling decision and I think that the LMP are just absolutely gutting the services of Brisbane City Council.
Any further speakers? Councillor Hutton will now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Community and the Arts Committee, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Community and Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of June 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Wolf, that the report of the Community and Arts Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 3rd of June 2025 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before moving to the report, I just want to comment on a couple of events that I attended this week in, in my civic chair capacity. And to say how very lucky we are here in Brisbane to have such amazing talent. Dusty the Musical is produced by Prospero Arts Productions and Hayley Johnson is a homegrown Brisbane girl. So it was amazing, everybody had a fantastic time and a real credit to Hayley for bringing Dusty the Musical to, to Brisbane. And then on Sunday, right here in City Hall, I was privileged to represent the Lord Mayor in attending the 32nd Annual For MBS Spectacular, this year with a number of different support people such as the Queensland Musical Theatre and also the Queensland Choir, as they presented to us a wonderful afternoon of Gilbert and Sullivan. And the City Hall was full of people, it was amazing. And I want to say a huge thank you to Gary Thorpe and his team at For MBS, who constantly and continually provide such amazing performances. We had Jason Barry Smith as an excellent emcee as well as a performer. So in between emceeing, he was singing and doing all sorts of wonderful things, even a little dance. And of course, we had Marusha and some fantastic singers from the, the University of Queensland. So just want to place on record my thanks to all of the wonderful people who make Brisbane the fantastic place that it is. Moving to the report, we had a presentation on the BrizAsia Festival. And this was, was very well received by the committee. We always are very excited to hear some of the information that is presented to us and also for us to contribute to ways to improve things for the, for the future years. This year, it was of course celebrating the Year of the Snake, embracing wisdom, rebirth and new beginnings. And more than 20,000 residents and visitors attended 26 events across 12 suburbs. The festival provides paid employment to more than 400 arts workers and aligns with council's Creative Brisbane Creative Economy Strategy. The festival first launched in 2013 and has since grown into a citywide event. One of the events that we talked about was Southside by Night and it was a, a really wonderful event and we could see from some of the videos that we were shown just what a, a great opportunity it was for our multicultural community to come together and for all of Brisbane to enjoy what has become one of its signature events in BrizAsia Festival. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put that, oh, sorry councillor, we'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Huang, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 3rd of June 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Dixon, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of June 2025 be adopted. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from our corporate security branch on council's safety camera network. Council has a network of safety cameras across our city and suburbs to protect our assets and to protect our community. Our council's corporate security team plays a vital role in safeguarding critical infrastructure and public spaces across the city and works in close collaboration with the Queensland Police Service and other community safety partners to do this. The committee was given an update on suburban, suburban safety camera program, which was part of the Lord Mayor's Safer Suburbs Commitment made at the last election. As part of this, we have now seen the rollout of the 26 mobile camera as well as the completion of the commitment to install permanent CCTV at 10 hotspots across Brisbane, with the last camera being installed at Boundary Street West End at the end of May. We also learned about technological improvements in our Integrated Security Operations Centre. These have exponentially increased our ability to report and respond to incidents in real time using live video analytics, rather than primarily, primarily serving a reactive purpose after an incident occurs. This includes intrusion and vehicle detection at council assets and object detection to identify when objects have been removed or left behind. It also includes loitering detection, which can identify potential antisocial behaviour. This enables our Security Operations Centre to notify QPS when there's potential incident to swiftly enable an emergency response. Since the installation, two of the mobile CCTV cameras have provided critical support to authorities by assisting in the investigation of two separate crimes. There are many technical advancements happening in this space and I thank our corporate security team for taking advantage of this for the benefit of the Brisbane community and doing so in a measured and responsible way. I leave further debate to the chamber.
Any further speakers? Councillor Messi.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak to this item. While I acknowledge the importance of corporate security plays in protecting council assets and supporting emergency services, this paper raises serious concerns about the increasing normalisation of surveillance in our public spaces, particularly through the installation of mobile CCTV units. We now see cameras embedded at various locations, including in Musgrave Park, at Luxe Workplace in Alap Plaza and Caxton Street. These are not just passive monitoring tools, these are programmed to track movement, detect loitering and flag appearance or disappearance of people and objects. This is a deeply invasive form of surveillance, which disproportionately impacts people who are already vulnerable. A few weeks ago, I had a briefing with the corporate security. I specifically asking, asked about the data behind the installation at Musgrave Park. Council officers confirmed there had been very few incidents at the site. So if the data doesn't support the surveillance, we must ask, why was this camera put there? Sadly, the answer of course is political. The Lord Mayor has consistently used rough sleepers as a political punching bag, implying their presence in places like Musgrave Parks equates to public safety, yet these cameras are saying something different. It is clinically and deeply hypocritical that the move from this administration to blame people in these areas, instead of facing the fact that this is the administration's two-decade failure to deliver housing that is generally affordable for renters, first home buyers and people experiencing homelessness. Let's be clear, homelessness isn't a crime. People using public spaces are not threats. Not all young people or people that loiter are criminals, despite the way they are often unfairly targeted or criminalised. Historically, Indigenous people and people of colour have been targeted by various forms of surveillance practices. The specific locations of these CCTV cameras suggest this continues to be the case. Surveillance like this sends a clear message that some people in the eyes of this LMP council don't belong in our public spaces. We need to stop treating rough sleepers and young people as problems to be monitored and start addressing the deep systematic failures that have led to these issues. These are failures not only of this LMP council, but also successive ALP and LMP state and federal governments, who refuse to take on the complex systematic challenges. So much data is out there about the fact that you crime has completely, has been decreasing decade and year upon year. And yet, we still look at the, at criminalisation. I've long been an advocate for real solutions, including investing in affordable housing, social housing, expanding youth and mental health support services and housing, implementing early intervention programs to break cycles of disadvantage and reforming laws that criminalise homelessness and poverty. Housing, support and dignity should be the priorities of this council, not more cameras.
Further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't actually surprised, you know, hearing from the Greens councillor about, about her statement, because he reminded us of his predecessor, former councillor Johnson Street, who encouraged break and enter to, to properties and also, yeah, and also all this, any sort of behaviours in the public space. So, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if she's advocating for something that is, we put in place, we put in place...
Councillor Messi.
We put in place these cameras to make sure our parks are safe, our public assets are safe for the Brisbane residents. We are not there to, you know, catch anyone who's not doing, without any wrongdoing. So, you know, I wasn't surprised, given the track record of the Greens councillors, you know, in this chamber advocating for break-in and enter. So, look, this is...
Point of order, misrepresentation.
Again, I haven't called you councillor Messi and I take the opportunity to remind you that while you got up and spoke, nobody interrupted you. I note your point of misrepresentation, councillor Huang.
So these cameras are there to, to support the community, make sure that it's safe for the community to use our public spaces. And I encourage all council to support it. Thank you.
Councillor Messi, your point of misrepresentation.
I believe through you, Chair, the councillor previously said that all Greens councillors supported break-in order and that is just simply untrue. I have never supported breaking and entering to any homes, neither has councillor Chong Wah, and maybe you should live in 2025.
We will now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors will now move to petitions. Are there, councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Messi.
I submit a petition requesting for Brisbane City Council to restore active transport access across the Storey Bridge, big heavy one.
Are there any other petitions? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to submit a petition that has been received, requesting council to install a pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Benheim and Hamish Streets, Callumvale.
Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We will now be moved to general business. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about an event at Moghl in my ward on Sunday, where we honoured a local wildlife warrior and former police officer Irene Darlington. Irene sadly passed away in February this year. At the time, a number of her friends reached out to me to see how we could honour her memory in our local community. For more than 40 years, Irene cared for injured wildlife, particularly opossums, without seeking any attention for her kindness. So collectively, we agreed an appropriate way would be to plant a tree in her honour in council's Westaway Park. We set two conditions, it had to be an Australian native, but more important, it had to be opossum-friendly. So we settled on a semi-mature brushbox tree. Chair, a little bit about Irene. A local resident recently summed her up best, and I quote, "Every helpless little opossum that required around-the-clock feeding and care, every little bird that fell out of the nest, every single animal that was in her care, she gave her blood, sweat and tears to protect and rehabilitate with the utmost kindness and tender love." Just over a year ago, Irene was diagnosed with stage four breast cancer, but she never let that stop her from passionately rescuing and rehabilitating every single little animal that needed help. On Sunday, I was invited to say a few words at the tree planting service. I didn't know Irene, but I wish I had. I remember that Saturday afternoon in February when I was contacted... I remember that Saturday afternoon in February when I was contacted by a local resident telling me Irene's story and that her days on this earth were coming to an end. She asked if I would send Irene a message of encouragement and thank her for all she had done as a wildlife carer. I said I'd do it first thing Monday, but something inside of me said do it now. I'm glad I did because I know my message was read to her before she passed the following day. Chair, I know there are unsung heroes in all of our communities like Irene and it's important we tell their stories and acknowledge their contribution to a better society. It was pleasing to see the large number of local residents who turned out to honour Irene on Sunday. I want to thank Irene's many friends, but in particular Kerry and Leanna, for helping me organise this event, the council officers who worked with me in securing permission to locate the tree at Westaway Park and, excuse me, Kenmore Horticulturist Trevor Dixon from AHI Gardens who secured the brush box tree and planted it for us. I'll finish by saying, as I did on Sunday, I hope we have done Irene proud. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I'd just rise to speak on a number of local issues in Tennyson Ward. Firstly, I would like to start by acknowledging the fantastic day we had at the Oxley Festival on Sunday, which is a major event in my ward. The event had to be moved from its original date in March due to the extreme weather that was held and we made the decision as a committee to hold the event in June around Queensland Day. I particularly want to thank the committee, which is a volunteer committee, it's made up of representatives from Club Oxley, including the President and the Treasurer, it's made up with representatives from the Lions, the Sherwood Oxley Lions, it's made up of residents from local businesses, including Tammy Hampson, and importantly, volunteers like Taylor, the emcee. But the people I really want to single out for their extraordinary effort in the lead-up to this event and on the day are the Tovey family of Oxley. Three generations of this extraordinary family volunteer in our local community, led by patriarch, although, you know, dad's probably a better word for Brian, led by Brian Tovey. He has, he is an extraordinary volunteer in our community. He worked from five thirty and was still going the next morning, dropping on Monday morning, dropping everyone's tents back to them and things like that. He is generous, hardworking, dedicated and just an absolutely remarkable human being and he has instilled in his whole family, all four of his children who volunteered on the day and his grandchildren who are now of an age to volunteer, they were all out helping. So I just want to particularly do a shout out for the Toveys, they are, as I know many of us have extraordinary volunteers, but this is a huge festival that they are so integral to putting on in Oxley and I just want to put on the record my thanks for their hard work and my recognition of the wonderful event that they put on. I think it's the biggest event that we have had in all the years that we've been running the Oxley Festival. We had fantastic new additions this year, including Jumbo Funk, which is a disco. I was dancing, councillor Hutton was not dancing and Milton Dick was not dancing, but I was because it was, it's so much fun.
Milton doesn't dance.
That's okay. I think the interjections from the LMP side are perfectly okay and it must just be the acoustics in here, but anyway. I just want to put on the record my thanks to the Toveys, they are extraordinary, I thank them and I look forward to working with them and all of the volunteer committee to put on the twenty twenty six, no, yeah, twenty twenty six festival next year. Finally, I just want to say something about the bus information today and the pretty foul comments by councillor Murphy regarding residents who are concerned about the 106 bus service. Now, residents tried to find information on the journey planner, but as the journey planner only provides a month forward, they could only get information up until early July. The timetable information that was available on TransLink Journey Planner did not show the afternoon school bus service being available. And given we were all told to go online and look on the journey planner by councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor, this information was not publicly available on the second or third of June when the timetable information was released. Now, we know this was a problem and we knew this was a problem back then and I've raised this as well, that no printed timetable or downloadable information was available until yesterday. That is how we found out that the bus now was not going into the Corinda interchange at Corinda Station where it services St Aidan's and it services the local Catholic school Joey's. It means that those residents will probably have to walk over a kilometre, I've had a look today, to the next bus stop because there aren't that many bus stops in this area. So anybody who wants to try and get out to councillor Hutton's ward on this bus from Corinda, on that stop, these school students we're talking about, will not be able to do so. Now, this is a direct result of the bad information, the lack of information and the delay in releasing timetabled information to the residents of Brisbane who are only from yesterday realising...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise on two items of general business, fundraising for Young Care and my recent Queensland Day family fun event. I spoke last week about how the Hamilton Ward community has a big heart and I wanted to share another story that demonstrates just that. One of my residents, Wendy Jones, who sits on the Young Care Board, recently braved the Simpson Desert to do a very gruelling trek to raise money. I wanted to share with you Chair, some words from her...
Just one moment, Councillors, if you are having conversations, can you take them outside because I can't hear the councillor. Councillor Dixon.
That's all right, thank you. She shared with me this morning about the trek. We did ninety-three kilometres in the first three days and did two hundred and fifty kilometres overall. The highest sand dune was forty metres. Of course, I had a few tough moments, mainly from sleep deprivation and one rainy day walking in clay, sinking mud with wet feet and freezing was not easy. Overall, a very worthwhile experience and even more worthwhile cause. Wendy was also chosen to be the flag bearer for the trekking group on the last day, which is a big honour amongst the trekkers and it's a testament to her grit and determination. It's hot during the day and it's freezing cold at night, so it's definitely no walk in the park for sure. Young Care raises a lot of funds through this trek and Wendy, along those who trekked with her, will ensure that the funds that they've raised ensure that more people are able to live in accommodation that is purpose-built. So Wendy is currently sitting around the overall eighty K mark and aims to raise a bit more before the end of the month to get a hundred K. This year, the trekkers have raised nearly collectively six hundred K. It's a nine-day trek and ends at Birdsville for a well-deserved drink, so well done Wendy and congratulations on a big effort for this important cause. Young Care is an incredible not-for-profit doing very important work, especially with Claire Stewart at its helm now. In fact, Claire was Young Care's very first volunteer. I am delighted to have a Young Care facility in my ward at Wooloween too and they celebrated their twenty-five years last March. And before its inception, sadly, many younger people with disabilities would end up in aged care, so Young Care ensures that they get the support they need. Now on to my second item of general business, the Queensland Day family fun event, which I held on Saturday the seventh of June. It was my pleasure to hold an event in Melrose Park last Saturday to celebrate Queensland Day. The park was buzzing with activity as residents were able to enjoy face painting, enjoy the pop-up library, learn more about litter prevention from Paul and his team from the Litter Prevention Unit. And to capture the essence of Queensland Day, we asked residents to write down on a board what they loved about Queensland and the common theme was weather, the people and community, it's no surprises there. The family fun day event also included a visit from our city resilience team and there was lots of positive feedback on the information they had to share with residents. And also the mobile police beat was there as well as display from the Queensland ambulance service. I have to say, it was all very popular with children, big and small, and to continue the Queensland Day theme, we had to guess the amount of pineapples in a jar, so congratulations to Josie who actually guessed the exact number. So continuing on the Queensland Day theme, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Botany at Newstead in my ward, who won the best parmi in the Queensland Day Best Of Awards, which was announced on Friday by our Premier, and also the Coffee Commune who were at Bowen Hills, who were awarded best coffee as well. So Chair, thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you Chair. I rise today to speak about the late Duncan Peg and today's anniversary marking four years since his passing. Duncan Peg was a dedicated public servant who served as a member for Streton from 2015 until his passing in 2021 at the age of forty. In 2019, he was diagnosed with terminal bowel cancer, a battle he faced with extraordinary courage and determination. I had the privilege of seeing his deep love for his work and community that kept him going throughout his treatment and eventually palliative care. He met with constituents right until the very end. Duncan began his legal career in industrial law, working for his first boss and mentor, the late and honourable Conchakka at Chakka's Lawyers. That early experience gave him a real understanding of justice, fairness and the rights of working people, principles that defined his public life. Even before his legal career, Duncan was politically switched on, joining the Labor Party at seventeen. He recounts the first time he met a Labor Party member was where he worked after school and on weekends at Franklin's supermarket in Brockhampton when he was fifteen. Sadly, I haven't been there ever in my life. Moving to Brisbane for university, Duncan was a true Southside local. He would remember dropping off his triplet brothers to work at Sunnybank Hills Shopping Town back when Calambell Central was still a grassy field. That kind of lived experience grounded his politics and made his advocacy so real. I consider myself incredibly lucky to have known Duncan as a mentor. He looked out for me and made me believe that everyday people like us could have a say. Politics is a privilege, but more importantly, it's a right that belongs to everyone. Duncan made that real for me and for many others as well. It's hard to believe that it's already been four years since he left us. We feel his absence deeply every day and I'm sure he's up there right now keeping an eye on us all, crunching the numbers with a strawberry milkshake in his hand. And even though I'm lactose-free, I'll be making sure to get a strawberry milkshake through the drive-through on my way home tonight. Duncan was not a man of empty words either or token gestures and he acted with purpose. He also actually lived the values that he believed in. He left personal bequests to community members, a quiet act of generosity that speaks volumes about the kind of person he was. And can I also add that he was always a step ahead, he may have helped to launch one of Australia's first internet-based student political campaigns, winning the Chair of the Griffith Uni SRC with www.no more trots 2000.com. His spirit brought people together and after his passing, we held the world's biggest halal snack pack fundraiser, raising money for a charity and sharing a laugh the way Duncan would have wanted. Duncan's commitment to service, showing up, listening and doing the hard yakka, set the standard for all of us. His legacy lives on in the people who loved him, his mum and dad, Graham and Lindsay, Lachlan and his triplet brothers, Graham Junior, Grant and Cameron. I want to end with Duncan's words to the house in 2018, "Don't mess with the Streton mums." He said it after the former LMP councillor for Calambell shut down Illawina Street and he meant it. His fears for his community, unafraid to speak up and always on the side of locals. Thanks to him, the fight for school mums, working families and putting locals first lives on and I'll keep backing them just like he did. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councilor Wong.
Thank you very much Madam Chair and I rise to speak of several very special and important events that occurred during May in the Walter Tail Award and a couple of initiatives that are happening across the ward in the coming months. So it's been a really busy and inspiring time for my community with plenty to celebrate. In May, we held a wonderful movie in the park, which was at Biumbi Yumba Park in Fig Tree Pocket where we screened Two Hundred Percent Wolf, of course. It was fantastic turnout with families gathering under the stars, enjoying loads of popcorn, it was great for community connection. Then over to Greenhill Reservoir in Chapel Hill, our bands Barks and Bytes event was filled with music, good food, crowds of dogs of course and lots of fun for everyone. It was a brilliant example of how our green spaces can come alive with the right mix of people, creativity and local fun. And recently, we also hosted the inaugural Youth Entrepreneurship Expo. This was at Indrapili Golf Club. This was an inspiring event that shone the light on the next generation of young talent. We had great speakers who were young entrepreneurs and they shared their journeys and their challenges and it was really fantastic to hear firsthand how they have made it as entrepreneurs. And upcoming, on the thirtieth of June, we're looking forward to Monday Fun Day at St Lucia Golf Links. It will be a relaxed, fun-filled day with scenic venue obviously at the golf course with music and fun for everyone, jumping castles and face painting, you name it. This will be a great opportunity once again for the community to come together for the first Monday of the school holidays. And as Small Business Month drew to a close in May, we were thrilled to officially launch our inaugural Inner West Small Business Awards with fourteen categories. Now, these awards will celebrate the incredible contribution of our local businesses, from retail to hospitality to innovation and through to services. Nominations are now open and I encourage everyone to support and acknowledge the great small businesses that go above and beyond every day in the Walter Tail Award. These events and initiatives reflect the vibrancy and strength of the Walter Tail Award, rich in talent, community spirit and opportunity. A heartfelt thank you to all the volunteers, organisers, local supporters who make this possible. I look forward to seeing everyone at Monday Fun Day and celebrating more of our local champions in our Small Business Awards. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Ah yes, thank you Madam Chair. I rise to speak about four items, the bushland levy, offsets, bus changes and finally just to congratulate some staff I met today. The first thing I'd like to say is it's nice to see LMP councils actually participating in a meeting because the last, since for the whole term, whole session, they have not been saying anything, so it's nice to see you actually participating in the debate. It is disappointing, once again, the Lord Mayor is not here, but I did notice that he did leave this behind, what to do in New York. While he's over in New York on that business class trip, he's left that around the chamber. Lord Mayor, we'd like to see you back in the chamber and we'd like to see you actually engaging with residents. So it brings me to my first speaking point, which is about bushland. We know in this chamber, we raise twenty million dollars a year and we have been doing so for thirty-five years to put towards bushland acquisition. I met with residents last week on Friday regarding the Beckett Road bushland. Now, those residents are very polite, very friendly, you know, very engaging and it's actually quite interesting that those residents also did know, it's good to welcome the Environment Chair back into the chamber who can respond to this, those residents did talk about meeting with the Environment Chair and councillor Davis and unfortunately councillor Davis had told them that there's nothing she can do to save this land, nothing we can do. So for years, these residents have been knocking on her door, trying to get an outcome, you'd think a chairperson in this place might be able to get an outcome, but no, nothing she can do. They have met with Bart Malish, plenty he can do, he can help them out, but unfortunately, this LMP council can't do anything. And they haven't heard from the Lord Mayor nor met him and I say, we won't meet him because he's in New York. He's never here, he's in Egypt or God knows where, but he's never here. So we raise over twenty million a year and we know this year from the reports that no land has been bought back at all. That's the hard work of our news team up there, running around, doing things for LMP councils but not buying bushland. I don't know who told them not to buy the bushland. Councillor Davis tells me she didn't say it, so I'm not sure who told them not to buy bushland. So anyway, it's important corridor, this is the missing link in that corridor, the corridor actually has platypus, it has koala population and it goes, they call it the mountains to mangroves corridor, very key corridor that's very important. So I implore the Lord Mayor, I implore councillor Davis to do something, I implore her to speak up in her party room and say, yes, we should spend money on this bushland. Councillor Adams did it, councillor Adams was able to get six and a half million dollars spent on land that had no bush on it, in fact had no koala on it, but she was able to get it. Maybe team up with councillor Adams and ask her how she did it. I think I'm running out of time here. I do want to talk about offsets, which is another interesting reveal in this chamber. Did you know we collected twenty, we have twenty-one million dollars worth of offsets? Does anyone know that? We've got twenty, so as well as twenty, twenty million dollars for the bush... million dollars for the bushland buyback, we've got twenty-one million dollars in offsets. And I finally worked it out. We are allowing so much land to be cleared and so many trees to be cleared that this has become a money-making venture for the LMP. So the LMP are actually hoarding and making money from allowing trees to be cut down. Isn't that perverse? They call it offsets. Oh, we're doing this tree planting, which we don't do and haven't done. We're accumulating money and at the moment, we've accumulated twenty-one million dollars. And I think as councillor Davis said today, we're a leader. We're a leader in ripping people off and making like we're green when we aren't really. So what I would say is let's get back to planting trees. And I have residents who've been waiting two years to get street trees planted and I do know that they are, I have talked to councillors on that side of the chamber, I give away your dendi, but I know they're frustrated because they can't get tree planting done and they can't, well, they've asked for notifications just like I did last week in the chamber. They're saying, why aren't we getting notifications? So I know there are people on that side of the chamber that are having exactly the same problems I'm having, but they don't voice it. But what I would say is voice it in your party room.
Your time has expired councillor Griffiths.
Oh, shame.
Just, just before we go further too, I'll just use your speech as an example because I didn't want to interrupt the flow. And you know, councillor Johnson didn't jump up and the many times that you said she or he criticised you, I want to reiterate that it is a courtesy to use the councillor's name, which you did, and that I'm quite happy with how you used he and she in that speech because it maintained a natural, clear flow and you were respectful. If you hadn't been, I would have pulled you up. So councillor Johnson, that's why I didn't pull up councillor Griffiths then. There's a very good example. So as long as you're respectful, you introduce the councillor properly, then I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
Any further speakers? Point of order councillor Johnson.
Point of order Madam Chair.
Yes councillor Johnson, point of order.
I can't believe my ears, but Madam Chairman, I would just like you to clarify for me that you have now said that some use of she or he or her and him or other pronouns is acceptable in this chamber.
Councillor, I think it's pretty clear what I said and most of, I mean, the councillors, you are councillors, you are capable of making those judgements and figuring that out. You're all intelligent people and I think it was pretty clear. And I now call for further speakers, councillor Wong.
Maybe you want to tell councillor Wong then.
Councillor Wong.
Thank you Madam Chair. I rise to speak on the naming of a local park. In November last year, the Environment Park and Sustainability Committee approved the renaming of Deep Brook Street Park in Robertson to David Smurdant Park. This change followed a petition led by local resident Gary Golding, who initiated the idea to honour the achievements of David Smurdant. David Smurdant at age of twenty-four was awarded the title of Grandmaster by the International Chess Federation in 2009, which making him one of the youngest Australians to receive this prestigious title. The title of Grandmaster is globally recognised and is one of the highest honour a chess player can attain. Mr Smurdant's other notable accomplishments includes formerly ranked as the highest chess player in Australia and currently ranked as the seventh highest chess player in Australia. And he represented Australia at multiple international chess championships and also represented Australia at the Chess Olympiad since 2004. He has also represented Australia at the forty-fifth biennial Chess Olympiad. Mr Smurdant attended Robertson State School and currently volunteers as a student chess coach at a local high school. He also collaborates with the International Chess Federation on projects aimed at helping disadvantaged groups within the community. Given Mr Smurdant's impressive achievements and his deep ties to the community, renaming the former Deep Brook Street Park to David Smurdant Park is a fitting tribute to our chess master. On May twenty-ninth, I had the pleasure of inviting David, his parents Helen and Lionel, along with Gary Golding to visit the park and share stories of David's journey to becoming a chess master. Gary recalled that as a seven-year-old boy, David was visiting his house to play chess on his computer. Remember, that was back in nineteen ninety-seven and his continual improvements and earning praises from the computer programme actually. David has credited his success to the unwavering support of his parents. He shared with us that his childhood ambition was to beat his father at chess. I must say, his accomplishments in chess have certainly surpassed his father's and now he looks forward to receiving challenges from his own sons. David serves as an inspiring role model for young people, showing how dedication and passion can lead to mastery in any field. In conclusion, I would like to congratulate David on his extraordinary achievements and I believe that naming of a park right next to where he grew up is the most fitting tribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Messi.
Thank you Chair. I'll speak on four items of general business today. Firstly, the Wreckling Cup, secondly Lantern Fest, thirdly Brisbane Youth Services and fourthly, a thank you to City Hall Security. But I'll try to get to there as quickly as possible. I just want to get everyone involved. The Wreckling Cup is an annual charity Aussie Rules game that raises money to provide sports, arts and recreational opportunities for disadvantaged Australians. The tenth game is happening in Brisbane. This event will be held at Inglewood Memorial Park. Please get around it, it's a really great event. Basically, it's a game between the rocking horses, which are the musicians, and the Brisbane Lines, who are the radio and media. I'm pleased to also say I've started learning AFL because I will be playing the match this year as a rocking horse. So please, if you are not aware of this match, it's a wonderful, wonderful charity that does really great work. To councillors that are not familiar, please get familiar and get involved. It is a really wonderful charity with a really great cause. Secondly, I want to thank Lantern Fest. Lantern Fest actually used to happen in the Gap Award. This year, it has moved to what is a really great venue for it actually, which is the Gap State School. I was privileged enough to be invited again this year. Sorry? I was privileged enough to be invited for the third year to be a judge. I wanted to thank the Brisbane Language, German Language School, who now have an immersion programme at the Gap State School. This year, Lantern Fest is so cool because basically, young people use recycled materials to make lanterns and then go on a lantern parade. Really wonderful family event, great food trucks, great food and while I'm sorry to miss it, while I'm sad to see it go from the Gap Award, when I walked in and I saw the event at the Gap, it was truly like, it totally made sense. And it was incredible because this event didn't just double their numbers from when it left the Gap Award. From my understanding, there was seventeen hundred tickets to this award, so to this event. So really great. Congratulations to the Brisbane German Language School and of course to Claudia and the team at the Consulate who, this is my third year judging with them, it was a really great event. There were some really, really cool lanterns. Thirdly, I just want to thank Pam from Brisbane Youth Service. Pam and I met a couple of weeks back, we've been in correspondence. Last week, Pam invited me to check out the Youth Support Centre in the Fortitude Valley and it was an incredible experience, meeting all the workers at this wonderful organisation. I just want to pass my thanks to Pam and the staff who welcomed me and gave me an insight on the work that they do in that space for youth homelessness. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the security guards at City Hall. I was in the city on Saturday and there was actually an incident that occurred that needed a defibrillator. And so I ran off, ran off to find a defibrillator and of course, I thought City Hall might have one. And I just wanted to thank all the staff that was there that day and the security who realised immediately that I was just trying to help someone who was actually distributing the big issue, trying to support them and their need for a defibrillator, there was first aid on deck. So I just wanted to do a big shout out for everyone that was working on City Hall on Saturday afternoon. Really helped out. I'm hopeful that person is doing well. We were able to get them in an ambulance and I'm just really thankful for the help of the security and staff at City Hall that day that enabled me to get that defibrillator to them. So, thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Givney.
Thank you Chair. I rise today to speak, to share with you some, the wonderful success of the Ampole Rotary Family Fun Day, which was held at George Clayton Park on Sunday and also draw attention to some upcoming community events in the Winham Manly Ward. On Sunday, this free community event was hosted by the Rotary Club of Winham Manly and it's a much-loved event on the Bayside calendar. It brings families, friends and neighbours together for a day filled with fun, laughter, live music and most importantly, connection. This year's event was just more than a fun day out. It was held in recognition and to support, in support of Domestic and Family Violence Awareness Month, reminding us all as a community that engagement and early intervention is crucial to tackling this ongoing issue within our community. I was heartened to see six DV support agencies attend alongside our local police to help with, helping to provide vital services that build trust and visibility with families who may need our support. Of course, this day would not have been possible without the incredible generosity of our sponsors and volunteers. A huge thank you goes to Ampole Australia, who sponsored the event with a generous contribution that funded the entertainment, equipment and entertainment, oh sorry, and consumables for the day. We also want to thank Australian Country Choice for donating the sausages for the ever-popular sausage sizzle and thanks to our amazing Rotary Club for cooking up a storm in their brand-new tent that was also funded by Ampole. This tent had needed to be replaced for quite some years and we're very excited to have this incredible new structure that they can use for their events. Thanks also must go to Perry's Fruit Market for providing six cartons of fresh fruit. Thanks to Nick, who helps out from Perry's, he's fantastic, and Urban Utilities who provided the water refill station to keep everyone hydrated. Finally, thank you to Bay FM for spreading the word through our local advertising. It was truly something for everyone, from face painting, jumping castles, farm animals and kids' games in stalls with live performances, including our headlining act, the internationally acclaimed guitarist, Leisha Louise, with entertainment from Bayside Brass, Manly State School and Queensland Heritage Services Band. I also want to acknowledge the many fantastic community groups who set up stalls and supported the day and I know I'm going to forget some, but here are some that I do know were there. Winham Scouts, Rosie, Sailability, Quota, Zonta, Ausfish, Queensland Fire and Rescue Service and Bayside Legal Service. Each of these organisations play a vital role in enriching our community and their presence made the day even more special. And of course, none of this would have been possible without the leadership and passion of Tracy Wyatt, whose tireless efforts bring this day to life each year. Tracy is a powerhouse and was rightfully recognised earlier in the year with the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Award for her outstanding service to our community. Events like this are a testament of the incredible community spirit that exists on the Bayside and remind us what's possible when local organisations, volunteers and businesses come together with a shared purpose to create a safer, more connected and more supportive community for all. Another couple of exciting events that are also on the horizon. This weekend, councillor Atwood and I will be teaming up to host our first Film on the Field, a collaboration with the Winham Vikings Football Club and Winham and Winham West State Schools. A message thank you to Winham Plaza for sponsoring the event, which means the inflatable screen will be lighting up the mighty ducks. And we hope that the Winham West and Hemet communities will rug up and join us for a great family night out, supporting both our local footy club and the hard-working school PNCs. Looking ahead, on Friday the twelfth of July, we're thrilled to be hosting the first ever Winham Fringe Community Street Party. Alongside the Lord Mayor, councillor Murphy and councillor Atwood, we're proud to be supporting Tom Oliver and the team at Winham Fringe by closing, Winham Fringe, by closing Bay Terrace and bringing the bush to the bay for a true hoedown. Thanks to the Winham Manly Leagues Club who are sponsoring this epic party. There'll be boot scooting, an Aussie barbecue, a jumping castle, face painting and for the brave grown-ups, a bucking bull. With performances from our many wonderful community bands and the amazing Felicity Kircher, who was this year's Toyota Star Maker Country Music Award winner. It's shaping up to be an unforgettable evening. We can't wait to see our community come together again to celebrate, connect and support each other. Thank you Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers? We'll now move to the notified motions. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item seven A on the agenda. Councillor Cassidy, would you please move the motion?
Thanks Chair. I move that this council immediately publishes a breakdown of expenditure of Story Bridge maintenance as stated in Story Bridge Restoration, Preserving a National Icon Committee Report, May twenty twenty five for the following items. Twenty nineteen to present, new steel coatings and extensive concrete and steel repairs. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four, paint restoration spans one to seven. Twenty twenty three, light pole refurbishment. Twenty twenty four, refurbishment of bearings in spans four to seven. Twenty twenty four, strengthening of trusses in span five to six.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that this council immediately publishes a breakdown of expenditure of Story Bridge maintenance as stated in Story Bridge Restoration, Preserving a National Icon Committee Report, May twenty twenty five for the items that you mentioned councillor. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. Each time we ask questions about what this LMP regime has done for Brisbane's iconic Story Bridge, we're told that they've given all the details and this has occurred over the last four or five or six weeks now. And we know that's not the case. We know it's not the case because each and every week, we continue to raise this. They keep releasing more details under duress. They don't want to, but they're forced to do so. The Lord Mayor produced a glossy document, a brochure called Story Bridge Restoration, Preserving a National Icon and he sent it out to journalists first and foremost, as he always does. It's full of, to some journalists, maybe some were cut out, I don't know, but there's lots of pictures, there's lots of pages that have sort of history of the Story Bridge, page detailing all the members of the committee and their CVs, lots of more pictures, more pictures, more pictures, more pictures. And we were told this contains everything that we need to know. We've been hearing that for weeks and weeks now. Every time we ask about where the so-called eighty million dollars has been spent or where maybe the hundred and twenty-eight million dollars that councillor Wines claimed in twenty twenty two needed to be spent. But when you go into this report, and this is what the Lord Mayor said last week and the week before, that if you just go to page fifteen and have a look at the list of items that are there, that is the full account of how the eighty million dollars were spent. Well, that list of items includes things as far back as ninety-two to ninety-five and through to twenty eighteen. Then the last five are from twenty nineteen to present, which we've included here because if we're to take the LMP at their word, there's always caution, there's always caution in that. But if we just proceed cautiously with that today, we're led to believe that the items before us today cost eighty million dollars to complete. So while the Lord Mayor says and he claims that in this report, he's given a hundred percent approval rating and apparently he's got the gold star for maintaining the Story Bridge, the people of Brisbane are less than impressed with his commitment and his work on the Story Bridge. People out there think it's an absolute disaster. And for the Lord Mayor to go and drop a report like this and then go on radio and claim that he's going to put a toll on the Story Bridge, and I know he doesn't like to hear that, but the only person that talked about putting a toll on the Story Bridge was the Lord Mayor. And if you just do a simple Google, I know the LMP like to do this, you just Google Story Bridge toll and click on the news tab there and just see what was reported about it. You look there and there's just a big long list. Seven News, toll may be needed to fund vital major restoration of Story Bridge, according to the Lord Mayor. Australian Broadcasting Corporation, Brisbane Story Bridge could bring back tolls without restoration deal, according to the Lord Mayor. And on four B C, maybe the only option, Adrian Schriner says Story Bridge toll. So the Lord Mayor is the one that has produced this report, which apparently is everything we need to know. He's also the one that went out and said that he was going to put a toll on the Story Bridge. And when we have continued to ask for information, so we are informed as councillors, we are making informed decisions here because we're required to do so under the City of Brisbane Act to be completely informed about the decisions we are making here in this chamber. to be completely informed about the decisions we are making here in this chamber. When we've been asking those questions, we've been brushed aside, week after week after week. And then we move motions and then all of a sudden, new information comes to light. So I'm hoping today, this is a very straightforward one Chair. It shouldn't take this and it shouldn't be like this, the process shouldn't be like this. But we hope today that the LMP will get councillor Wines to stand up and say they'll agree or move the motion to be put in. And that's that and we get the, we get the details of how that $80 million was expended over these five points in there. Because that's all we can go on currently with what the LMP are saying. And the people of Brisbane do have a right to know. They have a right to know why the Story Bridge has fallen into disrepair. And they have a right to know what the way forward is. Because if you flick forward just a little bit in this report beyond the two pages, the two pages that talk about the damage to the Story Bridge, page 16 and 17, you flick forward and there's a timeline there. It says 2025 footpaths close, 2032 the Olympics happen, 2045 the bridge closes. And that's what it says. So what we're seeking is information, so we're informed and the people of Brisbane are informed as well.
Time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Wines.
Yeah, thanks madam Chair. Can I just, I speak in response to this resolution, the proposal by councillor Cassidy. And he reassuringly has finally opened the document, which I, I find finally, after all these months, he's finally read the document. And his final comments lingered on, I think, what really is the most important page. What councillor Cassidy left out of that page is it says the time to act is now to restore the bridge for another 100 years. And what councillor Cassidy rightfully acknowledged is that it still has 15 years of life of operation in it. However, as that page says, the time to act is now. We are commencing a business case so that we can properly prepare and plan for any works, any and all works I should say, that are required to completely restore the bridge. Now, this is, and that document makes this point as well. There is a separation between maintenance and restoration. There has been a significant and ongoing maintenance programme on the bridge for many, many years. However, at the 100-year marker, a full restoration needs to occur. For us to hit that timeframe marker, we have to move now and we are. The, the interesting part of that is that it, it provides once again a long-term commitment to what is a key piece of infrastructure. Councillor Cassidy made reference to tolling. And in my view, the only person who's barracking for a toll in here is councillor Cassidy. He, once again, he makes a hyper partisan point. When the federal government, which routinely, routinely funds a whole range of major infrastructure assets all around the country, for example, but not limited to the Bridgewater Bridge, which was opened only a week and a half ago, servicing a mere 22,000 vehicles a day, a fifth of what the Story Bridge does, the federal government provided more than $600 million to the people of Hobart. But councillor Cassidy feels that the Prime Minister should not contribute to the people of Brisbane. A people who quite frankly pay councillor Cassidy's wages to do the right thing by them, which he never, ever does. He only does the right thing by the Labor Party. And that's the important thing to remember at all times when dealing with councillor Cassidy, is that he will never do what's right by the people of Brisbane, only what's right by the Labor Party, which is why he's running cover so hard for the Prime Minister right now and why he and his team are the only ones pushing for a toll. No one on this side wants to put a toll in. We would like, no, no. We would like the federal government to contribute meaningfully as they do most every place else. And we had an interesting presentation in committee this morning where the federal government made funds available to fix up the Shaun Cliff escarpment. Now that sounds like local work to me. But apparently, according to people like councillor Cassidy, that's relevant national work, but the Story Bridge is not. The Story Bridge is not. Now, the important part, I think, when responding to councillor Cassidy's claims that information has not been forthcoming, madam Chair, every week I come in here and provide information. I provide so much information that councillor Cassidy has been unable to get himself across all of it. And is now effectively asking, would the officers mind editing it and making it easy for him to read? It's getting to that point now. He says, oh, I don't really want to read it, I don't really have the time for this, he says. However, he would like, he'd like the officers to do it for him. And well, here's, here's the thing. It's, it's quite materially a question on notice in today's papers. We agreed to provide meaningful information about all of our works over many years on a dedicated website that was agreed to last week. So now all you can think of is the purpose of this resolution is that councillor Cassidy is putting a series of red lines down to see at what point will the LMP say no? At what point can they, in their little game about where they want to call us secretive? At what point will the information, will we have to say, we can't find that information in the timeframe requested of us? Well, here's the thing, madam Chair, we've provided a pile of papers this big, which councillor Cassidy has not read. We also understand, I also understand papers provided to him that he also hasn't read today. And as a result, we're not doing his homework for him. And I move that this motion lay on the table in accordance with the intent of the meeting's local law.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Wine and councillors? Councillors, it's councillor Johnston. Councillor Griffiths? It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Dixon to lay the motion on the table as this is procedural and I'll move the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and 7 against.
That is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 7B on the agenda. Councillor Griffiths, would you please move the motion?
Yes, thank you madam Chair. That this council suspends all, all international travel until the Story Bridge footpaths are reopened.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Cassidy that this council suspend all international travel until the Story Bridge footpaths are reopened. Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, and I think after the way the last motion was treated, which was appalling, it just shows the secrecy that is, that this LMP have got after 22 years or 20 years in this chamber. And it's disappointing because the motion was originally moved, a motion was originally moved by two councillors on this side of the chamber who wanted information with regards to Story Bridge, Story Bridge footpaths. And that was at the beginning of session and it's taken us a whole session to get that information. Now, it doesn't, this is very simple. Where this administration have let the side down, they've let residents down, they've failed the residents of Brisbane and the Story Bridge is literally, the footpath is literally falling into the Brisbane River. When I've read the reports, and please don't verbal me councillor Wines, through you madam Chair, when I've read the reports, it says catastrophic, 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 catastrophic. The, the bridge is in a catastrophic condition. And my concern is the information not being released. My, my concern is the secrecy of this, of this administration. But more particularly, is the international travel done by this administration? Do I think the Lord Mayor should be at a leadership conference in New York? No, I think the Lord Mayor should be back here. He can't even be bothered being in the room. Do I think councillor Cunningham should be sending us postcards from Kyoto? And we've had four speeches about Japan? No, I think she should be back here looking after the Story Bridge. We have another councillor over there who loves Paris. Couldn't get enough of Paris. Two, well, there's actually two of them. There were two of them who were sashaying around Paris. But they couldn't be bothered being here, dealing with the issues that we have for the city, for the residents. And I go out and talk to residents, you know, and, and what they say to me, they raise the Story Bridge themselves. And they say, we don't want a toll. And I say, we are against the toll and we will fight the toll the Lord Mayor wants to put on that bridge. Because that bridge should not have a toll. And it's typical of the LMP to add taxes and add tolls and then be taking off on an international flight, sip and wine. So no, this is all about stopping the LMP from doing their, their comfortable little trips. And frankly, I don't think our staff should be doing these trips either. And I'd be a bit embarrassed if I was a staff member heading off overseas when the city is in such a mess. We can't, we can't deliver on KPIs, we can't deliver on anything. I constantly hear councillor, we're trying. Councillor, can't get that done. Oh councillor, that was a year ago. Councillor, we're doing our best and I have no doubt the officers are doing their best. It's the leadership and it's the political leadership in this place that is more interested in their overseas gaunts, more interested in their overseas trips than, than the residents of Brisbane. So this motion is really clear, Lord Mayor, LMP councillors, it's time to stop using ratepayer funds inappropriately and get back to the business of, of looking after our city and looking after the residents in our city and making sure we fix the bridge and we deliver it with no tolls. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you madam Chair. Well, I honestly, after listening to councillor Griffiths, I only agrees with one word he said in his speech. Appalling. This is such an appalling motion here. Because when I first read this motion, I mean, I was confused. You see, the motion does not make clear that it's talking about official travel by councillors or council officers. In fact, it calls for Brisbane City Council to ban all international travel. So I was, I was surprised because last time this happened was during the COVID. You started March 2022, oh sorry, 20, when Prime Minister Scott Morrison closed Australia's borders in response to the COVID pandemic.
One moment please councillor Huang. Thank you. Just one moment please councillor Huang, can you press your mic? Another example where councillor Griffiths spoke the whole time, not interrupted. Thank you councillor Cassidy. Nor were you interrupted when you spoke today. Councillor Huang.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy say that Scott Morrison was my hero, he was. He did such a good job during COVID, protecting Australia and making us safe. But actually, I found, I found councillor Griffiths may also be inspired by Scott Morrison after reading that he received an AC in the King's Birthday Honour this year. So perhaps councillor Griffiths wanted an AC himself. That's why he, yes. But I didn't realise he was such a big fan of Scott Morrison as well. That's why he moved this motion. The problem, madam Chair, is that the section 51 subsection 20 and 29 of the Australian Constitution reserves this power only for the federal government. It is not up to Brisbane City Council to ban international travel. And in fact, it may violate the, what's called, without legitimate reason, it may be violate the Declaration of Human Rights. You are limiting the freedom of movement of all Brisbaneites. So madam Chair, Brisbane City Council does not have the power to ban all international travel. But after listening to councillor Griffiths, I realised he's clarified that he's actually meaning travel for councillor and council staff. Staff, but also that has a problem too. Because we can't stop anyone travel overseas. The Queensland Industrial Relations Commission would not allow us to ban our staff from going overseas as a condition of employment. So once you ban that, where can they go? I know councillor Griffiths loves, oh, well councillor Griffiths only go to Nusa for his holiday. But not overseas. But can I say, I can, I can, I can say, well, like, I will tell you, I'm going to Taiwan in September to visit my family there. So if this passes tonight, I won't be able to travel. Am I going to lose my job as a councillor? I don't know. But I think our council staff would not appreciate us banning them from taking a holiday or visiting friends and families, just like we do. And I can show that, show that what councillor Griffiths means is that council ban official authorised travel for councillors and officers. But this is a big backlash for Labor who have supported travel for the Olympics and Asia-Pacific Cities Summit. I'm glad councillor Kim actually got her career trip before Labor made this decision.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Kim.
I claim to be misrepresented.
Well, can I say, I also remember, you know, for those councils who weren't here that long, I remember councillor Sutton, when she was opposition leader, she actually missed a council budget meeting because she got an upgrade for business of first class. She actually missed that budget meeting. So that's just my recollection. But at least she, she has more understanding of the importance of foreign travel and enjoying business class and caviar and champagne. Everything Labor claims that, you know, shouldn't happen in this world.
But madam Chair, not only this is a very badly worded motion, there's no timeframe attached to it. We are, we are working right now to get the Story Bridge footpaths open as soon as possible. So madam Chair, I move that this motion be laid on the table.
Seconded.
Yep, just before we do a last, councillor Kim, your point of misrepresentation.
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to clarify that no ratepayer funds of Brisbane were used in the process of the Korean Conference. I also declined, I also declined all requests for an upgrade to business class flights as well or any other perks from council.
Don't debate it, just say that, get straight to the point, thank you. And we'll now move that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the result.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 7 against.
The motion is carried and that now ends today's meeting.